Well, I will welcome everybody to our council retreat, our March 1st council retreat. We're opening the meeting at 9:06 a.m. Thank you, everyone, for showing up here on your Saturday. We've got some good work to do today. So I just want to start off with a little bit of a welcome. We've got public comment and then we're going to do a little bit of round robin, getting to know each other before getting into some of the deeper work of everything. So just as a starting, you know, we like to come together as a retreat at least twice a year to have a little bit of time to talk over some of our priorities, some issues that may have come up. We've used this very effectively for budget prioritization in the past. And so today we've got two main topics on our agenda after the administration gives us their update and lets us know what's going on in the world. First, before lunch, we're going to be talking about communications. And so I, I will give a deeper update for that later on. But the whole point is, I feel like in the last few years, we've been struggling with this concept of community engagement, you know? We've brought up council listening sessions, other ways that we wanted to really connect with the public. And so some of those have struggled. And so this is taking a step back and going, let's really define what our issues we're having with communications. Let's think about what the impacts are for the city and for the public and then start to brainstorm. And we're going to hear from our communications team about what we're currently doing, because there's a lot of success in that area and we want to be able to build upon that. Then we've had a lovely lunch. And then strategic plan, priority setting, which is, you know, I will say, in a good budget year, it's great to create a wish list. In a more difficult year, it's really important to be able to solidify the things that are super important to us as a community. And so this is just a time period, as we know, everything that's happening at the federal and state and our local revenue issues, we are going to need to be pretty clear about what our priorities are. So we had said, we have some activities for each of these where we're going to put dots on and write things and all of that, and then come back and discuss. So with all of that, I guess I'll give an opportunity for public comment. Though I don't think we have anybody online. So as is usual, anybody who's watching this later, please, please, please email us. We don't get a lot of emails and your opinion really does matter. So email citycouncil@isiquawala.gov. And so let's start us off with the getting to know you idea. And this really, we've got a new member, so.
And Council President, just let you know the mayor's delayed, so she expects to be here at 9:30.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, great. So, so we did want to do this around Robin, getting to know, getting to know you. And yes, Kelly being here is prompting us to do this. But we also wanted to do it because we don't get a chance to talk to each other informally very often. We're always on the daisies. So we thought we'd go around and, you know, tell a little bit about ourselves. We wanted particularly ask each one of us to talk about the regional committees you serve on. A little bit about why you chose those regional committees. What's, you know, what are your focus areas of interest? What are your priorities coming in as a council member? And like I said, we don't always get a chance to share why these particular topics are for to us. So it's for Kelly, but it's also for all of us. So that kind of, would you like to start us? And you'll see we've got about an hour, so if that's divided by seven, we have a pretty good, you have a good, let's say, eight minutes, seven hours minutes, thought, so I'll let you start.
Okay. So just kind of who I am in terms of regional appointments.
Yeah, why did you run for council and how did you get here? Whatever else, just what are your priorities?
I'm pretty well high. I have lived here my whole life, grew up in the South Cove neighborhood. Actually, when I was growing up in South Cove, it was unincorporated King County for a while until the city made this a great decision. Well, it may not have been offered by the government, just for the maintenance, but a great decision to ram it to South Cove. That was kind of my first interaction with the city was seeing my parents and members of the neighborhood start to think about how it's all of way. So anyways, that was kind of my first connection with the city. I graduated from High School. So anyway, I served and did some labor there, but just wasn't so much. And so I took an internship at State Let's, but opened my eyes to the policy and the right kind. All of these different appointments are relevant to me. Yeah.
What is your current neighborhood and any priorities that you have for council? You've kind of talked about your regional, why you're serving there, but.
Oh, yeah, and my partner Tyler and I now live in Ogden, Oregon, Spanish Point. So right next to the, it's called the Big Tree Trail, like right by the trail like that in Council Street, which is really nice. In terms of council priorities, they're the pretty common ones that we have. I'm like the strategic plan. I actually try to stay more open myself. Just put more into a machine of councils where information gets fed in. We do our due diligence, solutions get spit out. So I don't necessarily have like, all right, I can't, but this is one thing I would like to get accomplished. Although going in, I would have said our first family, we're slowly getting to. If that happened, I would consider my title of council major success.
All right, Kelly.
Yeah, I could go next. I mean, we all know, I gave this speech. I know. Okay, so I've lived in Fall for just over four years now. We just tell us during the pandemic because I want to be closer to nature and got it, you know? Being able to walk to the trail, Peter Mountain, hike up to the pergola and be above the clouds when there's an inversion, it's, it's awesome. And also my family, Lisa was in Samantha's board. I was over there, yeah, so he's been for two years. Um, okay, what regional boards am I on? So I'm on, I'm the alternate on the South City Association Public Issues Committee. And I'm the alternate for KFC, the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, wherever the lawyers are. And I think, you know, my background being in sustainability, I think one of the things that I want to do is kind of take that lens to all aspects of what we're doing. Because, for example, like my facilities, I sent you this email yesterday and be like, oh, we have all these capital improvements. Are they replacing gas equipment with a gas footprint or was incremental cost of putting in heat ups? And then, then it's like, okay, if you have to replace it anyway, the incremental cost of putting in a heat up to make something that we could actually, you know, do in our sustainability or something like that, that we're not launching in 2024 to the mission. But I think just having kind of that lens to everything that we're doing and being like, where's the, where's a way that we could do the sustainable things, but, you know, without a huge lift? I think. Also, development is such a huge issue, being a young person who lives in, you know, building housing, I love it, it's great. It's, you know, learning, just figuring out how we can do more of that. White girl coming in, you know, building up. I think one of the things with like how, just seeing how density has been built out in other local places, like, you know, building downtown, there's like, oh, now there's densities. And the things that it can pop is like West Elm and like jewelry store. Which by the way, I did get my visa for there, so it's also for that jewelry store. But it's not a place where it's like, oh, it's literally, you can be going there every day, dropping, you know, lots of money. And so thinking about how we can make it so that in addition to having more housing, it's like, it's a great place for people to feel, to get around where they need to go without getting a car. Because our traffic's bad and with the new development, we don't want it to get worse because people can't really need to do without a pickup car. So, you know, and I'm not, and it seems like nobody has really totally figured this out. So I was interested in thinking of more about innovative ways to, you know, encourage like great neighborhoods. And in Paris, they have the class of like 15-minute neighborhoods and how can we, you know, plan for that year? Was there anybody else that needs? That's good. Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Where, where to start? So I think I have more years in the area than Zach does. So I was doing the math here and so more than half my life in the greater Isiqua area. So 34 years in the area. Originally, I lived in San Amish, but when I moved there, it wasn't San Amish yet. It was still in a failing address and in the same place that I live, which is unincorporated King County. So, so I lived there for 17 years and then another 17 years now in Isiqua proper and loving on talent for the same reasons with Kelly. It is super, sometimes frustrating there, but super cool to be so close to the trailhead. And Kelly is close, but I am closer. It is, it is 64 steps from my, my front.
I probably walked half the castle. I don't know what's.
I'm in the middle housing too. I never really, I realized I lived in middle housing until we defined what middle housing is. But since it is a duplex, it is middle housing. And it's, it's perfect for us and I love its pieces. So that kind of leads into why I really wanted to run council. I was when the Talus Development Agreement was coming through flows. I wasn't really super stoked on some of the decision making that was going on. At least no, no offense to my friend Tola, but I think there was some, there was some direction that wasn't well, as well thought through. So that was my primary driver was to try and bring a talus voice. Because at that time, it wasn't like now where Talus is like this council powerhouse. We, yeah, we had nothing. And, and so I wanted to do the talus voice. I think we have done some great, great things since then to really improve the neighborhood. I have a background and an interest in great government. I mean, that's really was my, my professional vocation before the last 45 years. And I'm really excited and I'm always too busy over there talking to the mayor while I'm about to give them a huge compliment. I am so excited and gratified by the professionalization of the city administration over the last eight years. Since I've been on council, it is, it is, it's incredible. So kudos to you all for, for doing that. And that was, that's something really super important to me. And then, you know, my current vocation and my, always my advocation has been around finance and, you know, and systems thinking. And so what I really hope bring to the council is kind of a different kind of point of view on how we finance things and how do we think about things as systems, not as point solutions? And how, when you move something over here, how it leaves something else over there? And taking a broader perspective. I'm, I am, I think everyone knows this, but I'm, I'm in my, my final months here with you all and I've had such an amazing time. So as I, as I slip into my next chapter, I've, I've shed most of my regional commitments and, and I'm okay with that, though I sometimes have a pangs. But I did have a great three years as a member of GMPC in King County. I spent these five years on Eifer Board, that is great. And then, thank you, Russell Jockey, dragged me into the Cascade Water Alliance. Had a really interesting pivotal time when there was a lot going on there. So I spent a year as an altergum on Cascade and that was super fun. And it's just really, really weird to me because my lawyer's name is Cascade also. And so it is the most generic, nondescript, innocuous name in Northwest is Cascade. So if you don't want to know what you do, the name is Cascade. For us to be.
And you were also a vice charity, great help.
For what?
Oh, for your vice chair.
I don't know, was it a year or two years? I also spent a year as Deputy Council President. That was super fun. Had a great time with Representative Pym. During the pandemic, we, we had a very special time to be in leadership, so that was great. I've spent time on all of our standing committees, at least one year on each one of those. So I've kind of done, done that. My, my very first year, Wally was saying, Tole Martz, who was council president at the time, I chaired Services and Safety and that was, that was super fun. Anyway, play again.
Russell.
Oh, we're not going to go these other, we don't care about.
Oh, come on.
No, that's not. God, he's punching.
All right, well, I moved here in 1995. It'll be 30 years in May. We've had the benefit of living in town, both as a homeowner and now as a renter. I think that gives interesting perspectives to the housing situation we're in and infrastructure and all the other topics. So when I first served at 1999, 2000, I was still practicing law in town as a prosecutor. So paring over some of the public safety ideas, I did serve on Eastside Fire and Rescue for two or three years in its infancy, when we were trying to sort everything out, so to speak, during that time. And I think that the reason I ran for office is my parents, particularly my dad, always said that if you're going to live in a city and benefit from its roads, its infrastructure, the great society that's been built, you have to contribute to that society as well. And I use the word great society for a reason, right? President Johnson talked about the great society and how we need to not only build infrastructure, but also care for those that are in our community that might be less fortunate or have challenges that you may not be able to see at times. So close to my heart is service in nonprofits. I did a little bit of nonprofit work out in my law career, both with United Way and with the Japanese Cultural Community Center of Washington. But currently I serve as a government affairs manager for Master Builders of King and Snohomish County. We're working on trying to increase the supply of housing in Snohomish County. I have eight or nine Snohomish County cities that I get to try to convince that middle housing's a good idea, that increase the supply is a good idea, that will eventually decrease prices and build the fiber of your community. So I try to bring those ideas back to us a little bit as we, as we struggle with middle housing, the other topics that are going on going forward. Hope to bring some other information and tidbits that might not be immediately at hand for us as, as we're talking about these items in our debates. Right now, I, I serve on the LTAC Committee and Chamber. I was kind of lumped those two together, various in making sure that we have a, a good business foundation. And also LTAC has a touch into the nonprofits in terms of the support that it gives for events that bring in people from more than 50 miles away, events that are regional in nature. Events are a little bit different from maybe all the, all the regular events that we do year after year. And the chamber needs business support, so I appreciate Wally attending those meetings with me and giving me the information that we need to convey to the chamber to let them know that we are fighting on issues such as public safety with shoplifting, with building the business community, making sure that all of us, whether it's visit Isiqua, the chamber, LTAC are moving in the same direction for building a strong foundation of business here in town. When I served on Cascade Water Alliance, as was pointed out, and I primarily served there as kind of a legacy. When I was first on council in 1999, many of you know that Joe Fortner and Dave Cathler said, we really need to sign this agreement. We really need to secure water for Isiqua for well into the future. And I was a person that needed convincing, but I was convinced after talking to Joe and talking to Dave and working through the long-term infrastructure ideas that could come from the alliance and the way that we could work together to make sure that, again, another foundation is being created, Public Safety Foundation, Business Foundation, now water as well. So I'm trying to make sure that we continue that supply long-term. We're able to continue to build on what we're doing in the future. So I guess the, the reason I originally ran, of course, was the public service aspect. But why did I wait 14 years and then run again in 2021? Did I have a lobotomy or was there something that? So I've always been a person, a little bit like Chris, in terms of being a person concerned about good governance. And in 2021, good governance wasn't exactly the way we would describe some of the upper echelons of our, our government. And I knew that from my prior experience, that government closest to the people, local government, has the most impact and influence on people. And so I came back in 21 to continue to build good governance, to continue to make sure that people understood that our local government works. It delivers on infrastructure, delivers on support for profits, water, long-term communication, long-term infrastructure for transportation. So that's why I came back and I wouldn't have come back if the council wasn't functional in the sense that, not like some administration. And the, and the administration was not making strides to become more professional. When I first ran and got on council, we were 9,900 people. The administration that was there, that was there fit the 9,900 population city. The city of 40,000 people needs a completely different council and a completely different administration, but I think is fitting the bill and doing a great job. But the council also asked to become more professional and I've been impressed with the way that all of us work together, the way that we're collaborative, the way that we communicate together and hope to continue that, you know, as we go to this next election, the year after that, the year after that going forward. So I think I'll stop there.
All right, I've been 19 years in Raccoon Hollow, our place up on Squawk. My house, it joins Squawk Mountain State Park Natural Site. So I guess technically I could walk from my property into wilderness, although it's, it's a slog. I'm in my 16th year on council. I've already filed with EDC to run again. Why do I do this? Living wage jobs and workforce housing is where I started. Public safety and emergency prep have become as near and dear to my heart as those first two. My goal is to always be the most deterministic council member. So I always ask Wally if I'm the most predictable in terms of what I care about, which is not to say that I don't listen to an argument, but I try a few to the things that I've said are important to me and stick with them. I've been on EMAC, Washington EMC, GMPP, GMPC, Regional Law and Social Justice and others. Currently the junior member on Eifer, happily the junior member of the city on Eifer. And I've been on SCA Pick forever. And Pick is like the US Senate, the longer you're in, sort of the more power you wield, which is fun. I've been chair of Pick as well. Everything that we do, this is my political philosophy and it impacts what we're going to talk about today. Everything that we do is balancing the will of the majority versus the rights of individuals. And every decision that we make, as we write laws, we write checks, that's all we do. So let me use dog parks as an example, right? So if you said anybody in the city can make a dog park anywhere in the city, every park in the city would, would allow dogs. If you said, we're only going to do what the majority of the population wants, you might have zero dog parks, right? So our job is to figure out where that line exists and then execute it, right? The, the correct number of dog parks is something between zero and all, right? And, and then you have to figure out, okay, we have a finite number of dollars. So how do you prioritize dog parks versus soccer fields and, and cricket pitches and whatnot? So that's the hard part. And that's where, it's not enough to just listen to everybody in the community. Transparency is important, but even if we could pick inside the minds of all 40-ish thousand people in the city and ask them how they felt about dog parks, that still wouldn't tell us what we should do about dog parks. We have to make a decision. We have to balance what the majority wants versus not trampling on individuals and, and being physically prudent. And then, you know, the Constitution, for as long as it lasts, is going to continue to say that we go back before the public every four years and say, haven't we been doing a good job? So I'm allowed to go back before the public and they can tell me whether they think I've had the correct focus or whether I've had my head up my butt. And so we'll see what they say. As you can tell from my shirt, I'm a NASCAR fan. And I, just so that people know, and this is probably fine. I've had some health challenges in the last six months. I'm now on a really good diuretic called torsamide, so I'm going to wander out of here every so often to the restroom. Don't take it personally. But yeah, in case anybody has wanted to know, I have, you know, during your, during the appointment process, I was actually like in for my location. So hopefully, hopefully it's all sunny from here, but I thought I'd address the alternative. Thanks.
I'm Lynn Walsh, currently serve as the city council president. This is my third year as council president. Like to say I'm a mom first and I think that helps view of my role in the city and my view on the future. So I've got two teenagers, a 16 and an 18-year-old, both at Gibson Eck High School. And, you know, one of them wants to be a kindergarten teacher and he's not going to be able to live in the area. And gosh knows, we need good teachers and good firefighters and good baristas and all of the things that serve our city. So that is a huge part of how I view my role on council and the way that I look at the decisions that we make. I'm also a small business owner of 20 years. I run a marketing agency. And so part of that, the only check that I continue to write as a small business is to the city of Isiqua. Everything else I pay for as a business is all online. And so that's another area where I have a particular way of seeing things and a particular experience that gives, you know, a different way of thinking about things. And so that's why I've been pushing both for the online utility billing, but also business occupation tax online and that ability. I also just very much care about our small businesses and particularly our downtown. I think they're the fuel of what we are as a city. It's, it's our heart. And, you know, if you look at some of the other small towns in the area, including ones larger than us like San Amish or smaller like Maple Valley, that don't have that same connective tissue at the center. I think that's something that is really important for us to recognize. I started getting in, well, I started getting into policy in high school. I ended up going to USC and got a degree in public policy, planning and development. But then I had kids and started business and that took me going off in all kinds of directions. But I think around 2012, 2013, I signed up for CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team. And just recognizing the fragile nature of government in an emergency response and how important it is to have a connection to people who can be the helpers was really important to me. And then in 2016, I want to say, I volunteered and got placed on the planning commission. I applied for the vacancy on council in 2018, didn't get it. Victoria got it. I applied in 2019 and got it. So I've been serving since then, gone through two elections fairly unopposed in that period. As far as where I serve, I'm on the Planning, Development and Environment Committee here. I'm an alternate for Eastside Fire and Rescue. I'm on the Puch Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board and then the King County Affordable Housing. And my focus areas and priorities, I think, if I had to say housing, housing, housing as the number one, two and three, I think housing is one of the things that touches all of the, all of the areas that are important to the city. It has a sustainability and environment factor. It's important for small businesses who I've heard so many times in the healthcare field and everything, that they have a hard time hiring and keeping workers because. that they have a hard time hiring and keeping workers because of the commute. It has a huge issue on traffic and transportation and our ability to get around. It's huge for emergencies. It's huge for infrastructure. It's super important for our city's ability to have a financial revenue stream that is more than our cost to serve each of the individual homes. And so I just care about that area so much for all of those reasons, but also because I'm a mom. And my kids are not going to be able to live in the area because of the way that housing prices have continued. And so all of it comes back to that individual experience that I think is also something that seniors and people on fixed incomes and working families are also experiencing in the city. It's also the twenty-six thousand people who live in the, or who work in the city but don't live here. And so that's that huge amount of our traffic that's coming in that I know many of those would love to be able to live here and go to our great schools and enjoy our downtown and all of that. So I will step off my box, but it's so super important.
Well, according to our schedule, I have fifty minutes to talk. I'm going to try not to take all these go to Mary Lou.
Yeah, I was going to say, I want to hear from staff and Mary Lou.
Oh, all right, all right. So Mary Lou, do you want to go first?
So are we as staff and mayors giving the same sort of speech you are maybe?
I think for staff is probably who you are, how long you've been in the city.
We'll go back her. Okay. So Mayor Lou is serving as the mayor, also an elected or re-electished in the city. Been lived here for thirty-one years, became as the public works engineer from another city. I bring a lot of that into my job. I like systems. I like data. Thank you, Councilmember Ray, for that comment. You're one of the big reasons why we really pushed into trying to get more systems on board and we're and why we are where we are. It was time to do it and that's been a great fun to refine over the last seven years. I have my letter porter is here and leaving soon, but there was an accident this morning and Olma is the one that is harder to separate from that whole back, but he is heading out the door in a minute. And this is my last year of a second term as well and serve on a lot of different committees. I think the big difference in the mayor's job is that I also serve on state level advisory boards and national boards. So that's one thing that mayors maybe have a better opportunity to do on. So I've been focused on PFAS, organizing to help crime and getting our female money to come back to us. So those are sort of the big things right now. Julian.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julian. I'm a management analyst in the executive office. I've been here since May, so not very long at all. And it would be helpful, I guess, some things I'm looking on include the TODOC and PFAS.
Excellent. Thomas Resch, being a Kansas manager. Been here, God, one is six and a half years now, so moment. And a lot of what I worked on, we'll talk about in a second. We don't need to double up on that.
Hi, Autumn Monahan, administrative services director. Worked for the city for seventeen years. Deputy Council President De Michelle was on the interview panel. Yeah, yeah. First communications hire for the city. Before that, we did not have a communications role. My background was in journalism. My first job out of school was working for Isipua Press. Was the editor at San Amish Review back when, so what? Had a long history at Isipua. I've always dreamt of moving here and we finally did. And so we live on Squawk Mountain and we have, my husband and I have two girls to go to.
Oli Bafus, the city administrator, have been here since twenty nineteen, so about five and a half years. For that, I've served about twenty-two years as a city manager, city administrator in California, Illinois and Washington. Have a nine-year-old son. I live four doors down from Bottom.
Wally, what drove you to you?
I'm sorry?
What drove you into public service?
My grandfather. He was involved in the American Legion in Illinois. And so while kids were playing soccer and baseball on the weekends, I was going to American Legion meetings. So I had my coat and my tie and I followed him and I took notes for the committees he was members of and picked them up on Sundays. So that's how this all started and it revolves through government. That led to real government.
Beautiful, beautiful. Tisha?
Yeah, so Tisha Eather, City clerk. I've been working for Isipua for nine years. I grew up in the area, but after college moved to Alaska where I worked for the state legislature for twelve years. And my husband and I were looking to relocate and I was interested in not having to live in a capital city. And so I was looking at some job announcements and I, from growing up in this area, I saw that job posting in Isipua and thought, I think that's a community I'd like, I'd be interested to be in. So again, I've been working here now for nine years, love working for local government, city level. It's been such a, like a breath of fresh air, I should say. And I live nearby in San Amish with my husband and son.
Good morning, Andrea Snyder. I served as deputy city administrator, but I started with the city as the economic development manager a little more than around thirteen years ago. So I've been with the city for a total of, I'm just shy of my eleventh year. Started in economic development, left the city of Erie and was recruited back stepping. So I've been in the deputy role for almost six now. And I love this community. It's a pleasure serving it. And it's been really great to see all the changes that the topic got in the past eleven-plus years. So that's been really interesting to see and be a part of.
And what drove you into public service?
Oh, well, it mostly started, I think, in high school. We had some sort of civics class. We were required to go to a city council meeting. And so I went to a city council meeting and I thought, this is the coolest thing ever. I had no idea what they were talking about. But I really geeked out and watched it and I still, whenever I'm traveling, if I have time in the hotel room, I click on the local access to watch whatever local city council or commission meeting is happening because I just, I find it all very interesting. So that's when it started. But my parents were both in the Navy. I were a college student in the Peace Corps for a while. So I think public service is my blood and I really like local government. That's my advice.
Oh, good. Forty-five minutes. So where to start? I've been here in Isipua for forty years. I grew up in Spokane and went to WSU, talking about community and public service when I was thirteen. I was a member of Rainbow Girls and they had a prize for volunteerism. You got this little jewel pin that was a little rainbow and I thought, you kind of want that. You had to do a certain number of hours of community service and volunteerism. And I got done and I won it and I was hooked right then. I loved volunteering. I loved working with people. I loved getting things that were good for the community done. And so I've been on that path ever since. And that was not the family that I grew up in. I grew up in a wonderful, warm family, but they were not volunteers, community volunteers. So I was sort of the oddball in the family growing up. So I started out as a teacher. I taught for six years. I taught middle school kids or back in those days, it was junior high school kids. I loved it. I was, in my mind, that time in my life, I was going to be a teacher. If someday I would be a principal and I had that far out thing, maybe I'd be a superintendent someday. I had this career path just laid out for me. So, oh, let's see, around nineteen eighty, my husband and I separated and I went back to Spokane and there was a state hiring freeze on teachers. And I tried to substitute for a year and realized I could not do that financially. And so a job opening came open at the Spokane School District for a communications person. And my background in education and I had published writing for some time, I got the job. And so new career path, new everything. And four years later, I moved to Isipua to be the director of communications for the Isipua School District. So, and that's how Autumn and I know each other. Were you on the Isipua Press while I was on the board or, yeah, while I was on the board? So, so at any rate, yeah, if things had gone right, I would be retired school teacher right now. But it's a different path. So worked for the school district for nine years and then went over to King County and their community relations department. Worked there for seventeen years, got a background in transportation. During that time, I got elected to the school board. Very interesting time for the school district, very similar to what we're going through now. It was becoming a big school district and it had been a small town school district. And as Russell was speaking, you have a whole different set of skills that you need in that process and we were going through that and certainly becoming more professional and maybe a little less attached to the community. But at any rate, so I was there for eight years and I really enjoyed being on the school board. It was a tough time. We had a strike. We had, we had some major things. We changed the mascot at Isipua High School and had hundreds of people angry at us. So then I decided to run for the council in twenty nineteen because Mariah Batees, she got both of us, I guess, yeah, because she stepped aside and there were openings on the council. And the reason that I ran, I had three reasons. One was affordable housing, transportation, because my background in abbotry and human services. And I sort of have this theory that as a city council member, I will be more effective if I really focus. And so that has remained my focus. I serve on the regional transit community and the Eastside Transportation Partnership. My experience at abbotry was really to come to an understanding of how transportation affects people's lives. And part of my job was putting together community advisory groups all over King County and hearing from people about what they wanted both for transit and roads and beginning to understand that because we don't have those transportation networks, we really, really make a dent in people's opportunities and their potentials in their lives. So really dedicated to transit, but not only transit, just having really good transportation networks. And I love the two committees that I serve on. I was also chaired the Eastside Human Services Forum again. I've just been working in human services for a long, long time. Founded both Give Us Choice and The Garage of how to be told of the people in our community who are vulnerable and need, need support so that they can become effective members of our community. And so that's been a long time dedication that I got to. And then affordable housing, Lindsay talked about it so well. I think that I totally agree with that. My, I've used this example many times on the campaign trail. My son and daughter-in-law would have loved to have come and lived in Isipua. And they could not at the stage that they were at when they started looking for houses, could not afford anything here. They couldn't afford anything in Redmond. They ended up in Covington because that was the only place that they could find a place to live. At this point, the house that they owned is probably way beyond the ability of someone at their stage in life to buy. And so I don't know where young couples are going these days with young families to get housing because the cost of housing is just beyond. And so as Russell said, I'm really dedicated to trying to figure out how to build our housing so that we start to accommodate the population that needs housing and hopefully also reduce our homeless population from our human services. So those are the things that are kind of driving me and that I'm passionate about and not that I don't love public safety and other things, but if I really am focused like, kind of like a laser on those three areas.
I think this has been really useful, just to put some stuff out on the table, a clearer understanding of everybody, their backgrounds. I certainly learned a lot about everybody. We're ahead of schedule, which is always a good place to be.
I can talk for another four weeks.
No, you can't, Mark. You want to talk about communications. You want to. I did want to take a moment. I hadn't looked at my notes very well as we started this. Just to recognize that this is the first day of Ramadan. And so we have a community and cultural calendar that tells us, you know, when we can and can't do meetings as a way to make sure that our meetings are accessible to people who are, you know, have their own cultural celebrations. But Ramadan starts at sundown. And so I just want to recognize the fact that we charge meetings on the first day of Ramadan, but it wouldn't preclude people to, um, be able to be. So Ramadan, the date adjusts it on the moon sighting. And so it's important to note that community members might be fasting, starting at from sunrise to sunset. And so it's a time of spiritual reflection, improvement, increased devotion and worship. And the last ten days of Ramadan particularly are a sacred time for introspection and prayer and contemplation. So just for recognition, you know, you may hear about iftars, which are an evening meal that is usually content with breaking your fast and a place for prayer. I know, I don't know if a new council member, if you're, you've been invited to that. I know my first year I was invited to an iftar up at Vaps, which was really, really very interesting to be able to create that community connection. So I just wanted to take that moment and recognize that that is the day, but you're, you know, as part of our cultural calendar, we are still able to meet on this because it's the evening. Okay, looking over our agenda. Next part is the administrative update. So Wally, I know you've got an opportunity here to just highlight what twenty twenty-five looks like. We know it's been particularly interesting so far.
Hey, Paul, I don't know if you wanted to make any initial comments before I got to the more particulars.
Well, first just a thank you for all the hard work the council did last year in a difficult budget, two-year budget planning. It's worse than we thought. And so while I thought the conversation was too thoughtful last year, we're walking, I think anybody who reads the national news and state news can see, the country is suffering right now. Prices are high. There's the chaos in government. Our state budget has a big hole in it. We rely on the state budget for a lot of funding. And at the national level as well, currently get twenty-four million dollars in capital projects Sunday and we're hoping makes it our way at some point in time. So this is a different year again. And I think it's great that the council decides at least two or three times a year to have these kinds of retreats to sort it out. Because we will sort it out. We did with COVID. We did last year with the big, first big financial hit that I think council had to deal with since two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven. So we will be fine. Things may look different. Services may look a little different, but just the context for this year is, it's a tough one. It's really, you know, with the bonds icon and the almost four million dollars there that is also being held up at the federal level. We really need to be thoughtful when we're planning about making sure we still have reserves for future weather events. Isipua gets a lot of weather events. And so just making sure that we are conservative and cautious in our planning so that we can undercommit and overaccomplish, I guess. Making sure that we're not disappointing the community by doing iterative cuts, but instead just staying where we are, planning conservatively and then hopefully we can overdeliver a little bit on a few things. And I think that would be really nice. So glad you're doing this today. Glad that the administration's given a chance to share some information about our status. But, you know, we, I mentioned it in there, talk about the, oh, I think it was Russell Joe, the professionalization of the council every year.
That's Chris.
That's good. That's just great. I mean, that really provides for some great conversation when we're talking about very complicated, complex financing situations. So I agree. I think. So I agree, I think we'll do fine. But it's going to be another tough year, even though it's not my annual budget here. The administrator.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of slides, but let me start with one message that I really want to convey, and that is prioritization. I, I, I think I'm not as confident as the mayor that forces that you're mostly aware of, but I will cover this morning, are significant. And they are significant to everything that we do. They're significant. They're not Issaquah specific by any stretch. They are impacting cities, counties, local governments all over the United States. We have our special pieces, certainly being in the state of Washington. But the administration's going to need the council to prioritize. Hearing the things that are important to the council, administration wants to achieve as much as we can of those areas. You know, the caveat is, is that there are things that aren't on your list, like police, like fire, like justice, that, you know, I won't say get taken for granted, but certainly I think there's an expectation that those services are delivered in a way that meets the needs of everyone. So those services cost us a lot of money. And as we look at resources, we, you know, we're going to ask the council to help us prioritize other things because if the council says to us, you know, we want to keep the community safe, we want to make sure the police department, our contract with EPR is fully funded, we want to be able to make sure that our court system is staffed, that it has resources to adjudicate issues that come before it. Those are all significant and those we have adjusted for in the biennial budget, they will continue to rise. But I think that the revenues that we have available to us are declining, are the ability to raise revenue is going to become harder and harder to do, certainly in the short and medium term. So prioritization is sort of the word of the day for me and as, as the council, I think quite smartly is going to spend part of the day looking at priorities. We will do our level best to deliver on those priorities in that context. So next slide.
And Wally, we just know that they can do it. It's a great council. A little bit of, you guys know how to do this. If you're going to do it, it's just going to be hard.
And, and, and because, you know, this council is great. I've worked with many councils over a long period of time who are the best council I have ever worked with in any capacity in thirty-five years. So that's great. But you have a dysfunctional federal government. Unfortunately, you are approaching a dysfunctional state government. You have a dysfunctional county. And so you put all those things together and really is going to tax your good function. And so that, that is part of the challenge. So we'll talk a little bit about those challenges. We'll talk about some of the, the budget issues we have. We'll talk a little bit about where the administration is focusing its priorities. And then some calendar issues as we look at the remainder of first quarter as we get into second quarter. Next slide. So on the federal government side, you're, you're all well abreast of what is happening. You know, our concern is the money that we get in federal funding. Much of it, if not all of it, is capital related. So we can manage through that. It's not a matter that it's going to have immediate impacts on our day-to-day operations, the regulatory environment, a lot of what we're spending capital dollars on are our response to federal regulations or the state of Washington implementing companion regulations. And so if those regulations change, go away, those will have impacts on our capital planning, on our capital budget. We don't have good answers to that as we sit here this morning. But, you know, every indicator is that there are going to be changes and that will have an impact on us as we go forward. The, the issues of public trust, we could spend the rest of the day probably talking about that, but it is permeating everywhere. And it is going to begin to have, I think, a more significant impact on how people respond to us as we go to them with issues, with the ballot measures, with revenue requests. What is happening in Washington DC is going to have an impact on that. The state of Washington, you're also pretty well abreast of that process. Legislature is in their long year this year. They are only beginning to approach budget issues. The governor and the majority of the state legislature are on different pages currently, and that is going to have a significant impact on funding and regulation for us, and we need to be mindful of that. Also, as the state legislature continues to be aggressive in providing unfunded mandates to cities on land use, we will likely need to find new resources to hire more people to do that. And in order to do that, that may be taking away from other really critical city resources. So we need to be mindful of that. You know, in my opinion, the state legislature is not connecting those dots and the costs associated with that, these are unfunded mandates. And so we will, as a local community, have to shift resources because I think our ability to raise new revenue is going to be severely limited in the short term. Next slide. So where we stand, again, thank you for your leadership as we've worked on the biennial budget. We are all of two months into a twenty-four month budget. I'm sorry that we have to talk about it two months in. You know, as we are looking at wrapping up twenty-four, the early indications are that we were right in our, in our estimates so that we are feeling cautiously optimistic that we will add the last biennial about where we thought we would. So that is, that is good news. But as we talk during the budget process, the administration is very concerned about a couple of different factors as we go through the year. And we'll be coming back to the council, talk more about this in second quarter and throughout the rest of the year. The first is the jail. It is an enormous expense to us on an operating side, on a capital side, on a liability side. And Mayor Polly has directed her staff to take a very critical look at our, our jail operation costs and to look to see what it would be theoretically, hypothetically, not to do this tomorrow, but what it would be if we did not have jail. And what would the corresponding costs be to continue to arrest people and incarcerate them? And so Dale Martin Crimp of our staff is working with the police department and is leading a team to come up with those answers and have some dates that we're going to share with you, which we would like to bring that information back to the council and get some policy direction so that if we need to make any adjustments to how we operate the jail, to being in the jail business, that would be something that happens during the course of twenty twenty-five that we would not wait for the next biennium. This would be something that we would do mid biennium. On the general operating side, we're, we're two months in on the operating expense side. We are, are spending to budget. We are reviewing new hires, but we are not blocking new hires at this point. So we're going to spend the money that we have budgeted as long as we can on the operating side. On the capital side, I'm seriously concerned that to go through any kind of meaningful capital planning process this year is not a good use of time and resources. And so we are going to disclose to you in a moment a changed way of doing that because quite honestly, you know, I, I need the staff to implement the projects they've got and not spend time working on projects for twenty thirty or twenty thirty-one that we have no real good sense of wanting. The Bob Cyclone, we've talked about it a couple of different times, north of three million dollars in costs. We have submitted all the appropriate paperwork to FEMA. Governor Inslee and now Governor Ferguson have both requested of both President Biden and now President Trump a federal disaster declaration. We're very fortunate to Mayor Polly, through her U.S. Conference of Mayors work, has created a new friend at the White House, probably the only, the only Democratic official in the state of Washington to have a friend is Mary Lou Polly. The White House Director of Intergovernmental Relations.
Deputy Director of Local Government Relations, yeah. So hopefully, I mean, she's been telling me that it's, it's moving through and that he is going to free up disaster declaration money. Not tomorrow, but pretty soon is what she said. And also she took a look at our capital projects list and said that she believes also in the coming months, there will be more clarification. And so some of the uncertainty that we're facing may go away or it may stay. We kind of have to plan for worst and hope for the best.
And we are planning. And then the future of federal grants, again, largely feeding back into the capital program. Our estimates are twenty-seven million dollars of capital projects at risk because of their budget. Next slide. So of the mayor's priorities, I just want to touch on a few of these projects that are important to the council, just to give you a sense that, you know, we are moving forward. You know, going to be meeting with all the city staff next week. You know, one of the important messages is that we are not paralyzed, that we are not stopping, but we need to be mindful, we need to be thoughtful and need to be aware of what's going on around us. The police, city office facility improvements, Mayor Polly has appointed a task force. That task force is in place and its first meeting is?
Our J-18.
Our J-18.
J task force. Yeah, biggest, I think, ever, twenty-three members.
Twenty-nine, it's just like you all want.
Deputy Council President, we thought there was no way.
We found twenty-three members.
High number.
So that group is moving forward. We have received six, seven, eight bids for City Hall Northwest.
Yes.
So, so we're going to be going through those bids over the next several days and hopefully selecting one to move forward with. So that will provide needed dollars to all of that. But we need to continue to move forward there and now more than ever, if we draw up a package, protect voters, it's going to have to be as tight as possible. We've talked about the jail, financial stability. We've talked about emergency preparedness efforts. You heard Jared this week at the council meeting with his outline of a work plan on wildfire. We're going to continue to put as many resources as we can there. Certainly can never have enough resources on the emergency preparedness side, but we are, that continues to be a focus. And then programs to build a community and nurture personal connection. We had a citywide meeting a couple of weeks ago here at the school district to talk about that. We have some good ideas. We have no budget for any of this, but we're trying to make some progress even without budget. On the mobility side, much of this we've talked about recently. Infrastructure, we've talked about city leadership and services. The resident survey is about to go on street. We have later in this presentation a timeframe to bring the results of that back to you. We'll hear more about communications later on. Growth and development, largely the Climate Development Environment Committee will continue to be looking at issues there. We're coming to the council on March seventeenth with an update on permit processing, social and economic vitality. Talked about the Economic Development Group gave their report. We're going to be going back to services, safety and parks in April with a second pass based on the council's questions. So that'll be the April services, safety and parks. We've gotten questions from our staff about where we sit with equity. We have talked to the managers that we are continuing to move forward. Nothing has changed with our commitment and we're meeting with city staff, all city staff this coming week, and we will once again reinforce that, that we are moving forward. Does not matter what's happening in Washington DC, it remains a community commitment and Issaquah and so forth there. Recreation programs, we continue to work on, on those you're going to be hearing from the mayor in March with her proposal to create a Fourth of July commission that would work on not only this year's parade, but also how Issaquah celebrates the America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday next year, twenty twenty-six. Arts program planning and funding ongoing. And then environmental stewardship, we're very fortunate, as you all know, with the Climate Action Plan, it's already time to do a midterm reevaluation of that. So Stacy McKintry and her team, as well as the Environmental Board, will be working on that. Electric vehicle charging, I'll just mention lots of grants out there that we mail and they never see on electric vehicle charging. So there's a fair amount of federal money that's probably gone. Next slide. So as we look at highlights for the second quarter, there is a COW in May, on May thirteenth, which we are proposing that we would bring to you, both the jail operating, cost analysis, and the results of the community survey to, to give you some sense of community priorities. Next slide. On the capital improvement side, what we are proposing is to come to the council April twenty-eighth, that council meeting noon.
Committee of the whole.
It's Committee of the whole. Highlighting where we are at with the briefing process, then we intend to go to each of the council standing committees with a review of projects. We've asked the staff to make the process as most very straightforward as possible. Not a lot, not a lot of detailed explanation sheets, but more spreadsheets with titles and numbers, and then we will get into those that the council thinks are meaningful. Will they come back to the Capitol Council in June, on June ninth, and then by the end of June. There's a transportation improvement plan that has a state requirement that it be adopted by June thirty. The rest are our own internal requirements. So there is flexibility on process with the exception of the transportation work. Again, the, the plan is a plan, the plan is not a budget, but we also don't want to spend a lot of time and energy on projects that we may not see or may be significantly different based on budget. Next slide. Then we're asking that the council consider a retreat, a second retreat in July so we can kind of take stock of where the world is at. At that point, we'll have a better sense of where we are in the current calendar year and then also begin talking about adjustments that we would need to make in twenty-five or twenty-six. Again, we're going to continue to spend the budget that we have as long as we can. We're going to stay at the full budgeted staffing as long as we can. I have every confidence that we can, through good prioritization, sort all of this out. But there are lots of factors beyond our control at work. We just need to be mindful of them. One of the criticisms we received with staff last year was kind of their shock. Why are we having budget problems? Why are we laying people off? You know, why wasn't there a plan? And we communicated that there was a plan, but apparently that wasn't good enough. So we are going to really continue to reinforce that none of this is any great surprise and that we are working on it. But it's not, it's, it's an iterative process. It's not something that's, that's one and done. So part of what we're coming to this morning is really make sure that the council understands what the plan is as we move forward, at least through the first half. I think that's the last slide. Happy to answer any mission questions.
Great.
Great. That made jail conversation. Is that intended to be sort of a full trade of here's the factors that go into keeping a jail or is it just the implications?
No, it has to be all the factors because, because not having a jail, we were to say, we're not going to have a jail anymore. There are operational impacts to that.
I, I literally wrote down operational ramifications.
Absolutely.
Well, and, and not just, not just the financial ramifications, but our officers have, currently have options when dealing with public safety issues that would look different if we didn't have to be.
And that, and that, that is hard to monetize.
I think that's why I said is it beyond.
So it's not a matter of not having a jail will save us fifty thousand dollars a year, so let's do it. I mean, it's not, those are not the dynamics at work.
Thank you.
But I think it's important for the council to know, you know, what it costs would be, what a financial cost would be, and that informs the remainder of the discussion.
And I think council member Morris brings up a good point. There's also social benefits to having the jail here in terms of we have people who get reassigned to this jail because it's not as.
Darwinian.
Darwinian. And it's closer to their families. So we, you know, when you don't have a jail here and you're booking beds somewhere else, it is a huge impact on. So we, you know, when you don't have a jail here and you're booking beds somewhere else, it is a huge impact on not just our community here, but all those little communities to the east of us as well.
And I will thank the council and Mayor Polly's leadership for the work you have already done on the jail. This is not, you know, over the last twelve, eighteen months, the council's added positions, has added money for electronic resources. And those are starting to pay off because we're finding that a better managed jail also is a cheaper jail. That we are saving money, we are cleaning up processes that were costing us money, and that's thanks to your additional support and resources to run the jail.
Mark, yeah? So I'll just take this opportunity to look at the latest on the table. But been hearing from a number of nonprofits that are already experiencing revenue loss because of either they are dependent on federal grants, their funders are dependent on federal grants. You know, it's going to be rolling down, it's going to heal. And so just being obvious that this is really going to impact some of the most vulnerable organizations in our community. We may see some of our, even our major nonprofits closing. Because, you know, I'm aware of one at least that's lost millions of dollars in the first month because they had a federal contract. So, so they're already in the process of letting people go. I mean, this is, this is shock and awe, basically. So I just want us to be aware of that and also to be thinking about how that's going to impact the city in general. I've heard that Energy Nurturing Network is going to be asking council member Perry to do a survey to see if we can start to gather, you know, the information across the east side of what the impact might be for our region on so these major nonprofits. So I'll find out more and see if that is actually going to happen. But I think we, if we can be reaching out or understanding the impact to where we're going to lose nonprofits, where we're going to see severe limitations on their services and so forth, and have at least an idea. I know we won't have the funds to, to begin, but at least understand what are going to be the impacts to our services. All people demanding services and know where to go.
Deputy Council President, it would be great, nonprofits, if I could as well. And so if there's going to be a survey, it would be great to have it written down geographically. Just to be able to understand where those pockets of green are being dark. And, you know, if we're losing a nonprofit, we may have to, as a community, find some informal volunteer ways to try and work out. You know, there's still a lot of people out there if you want to provide food, et cetera. But we don't want the nonprofits to fail. So if anything that can come is, it would be super helpful.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll try to, try to stay on top of that transformation. So, yeah, it's very disconcerting.
Can you comment first? One of the proposed dates for the council treaty definitely came to us on wedding day. So if there would be a different second option, that would be great.
Why, what was the wedding?
Six.
Twenty-six. We can do a Friday.
He's kidding.
Where's the rehearsal dinner? We'll find a room.
We have a tea ceremony.
Well, but if there's a room like this nearby.
Tea's our council member. I think that would be.
So if the council is agreeable to a July date, the city's clerics office will start. All things aside, we're not going to impact your.
Yeah, that's the only thing. Cause I'm like, okay, like we shouldn't even have it. Okay, so off the jail, so I actually, when I spoke with Rachel last week, that's a topic that came up. So I'm wondering if one of, and one of the things that we discussed was, you know, we're kind of paying a disproportionate share of the cost. And she's like, in Southland County, they have this interlocal agreement. That's why I explore. And also then none of the cities themselves have the legal liability. So it's one of the options that's going to be explored, like what would it look like to create an interlocal agreement so that it kind of takes the offer books? And, you know, they could have the Isquon one, the Kirkland one, and then, you know, that kind of covers our thoughts, but also has the the added benefit, you know, having it as a game in our community, but without, you know, the liability side. Liability and also disproportionate costs here.
Absolutely. And that, and that's part of the operational improvements that we're already seeing. And so, you know, the jail for a long time was operated in one way, and now we need to operate in a different way. So finding those kind of procedural ways to save money are happening right now. We're not waiting for the council's direction. Those are, those changes are happening now.
But I mean, isn't creating like an interlocal agreement and like having a different entity that kind of owns and runs it? That part of the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking, maybe I missed part of what you were saying. But we're already seeing some savings about where inmates come from. So I thought those were true talking about. But yes, one of the options might be to be operated in a different way. And that may be a more longer term question. So I'm sorry, I misunderstood the first part of my question.
I'd like to reiterate on Barb's comment, I'm also hearing from nonprofits, that things are unstable and scary. And so anything the city can do to be an organizing entity, I think, would be helpful as a uniter. That doesn't mean that we fund it or that we, you know, are financially supporting necessarily. But because of our unique place in the community and as have an umbrella over everything, I think we have the organizational tools that can help the type of volunteerism that the mayor touched on as we go forward. That's not necessarily our city organizing volunteers, but our city perhaps supporting the different entities to unite and not duplicate services or duplicate efforts along the way, but to help organize what's going on. The second point I'd like to make is, yes.
Cause I want to make sure it's clear, we don't have the staff to do that. When I talk about volunteers, I also mean council and mayor volunteers. So I think, and Barb and I have talked about this before, we really need the nonprofits to come together where we can attend and help them and listen. But we don't have staff that can reach out to the nonprofits or start cataloguing needs. So I think maybe there's an opportunity for two or three council members and the mayor to sit down and help the nonprofits organize in a way that we can show up as electives to take it. Cause we just don't have the staff bandwidth to do it in-house, even if it's not that they're asking for money. If they're just asking for that level of support, we won't be able to do it.
I hope that is not the case as we go forward, but I appreciate your point. I think that we are in a situation where it may be necessary for us to make some hard, hard decisions, as was mentioned. And I hope it doesn't come to a point where we're making hard decisions about the lives of people on the street and the way that our community is taking care of one another. So I appreciate your comment. I'll, I'll keep that in mind. I'm just not optimistic that things are going to go in a very positive direction. So I think that the other point that I was going to make is that organizations look to the city for leadership in what we do and how we act. And I appreciate Wally's comment that we're continuing to do our equity work. There are many organizations that have gone ahead and put equity and as part of their organization and the values that they have. And so by the city continuing its equity work, I think that sends a strong signal to the rest of our community that despite everything that's going on at these other levels, Issa Quass is still a place where we care about each other. We recognize and see each other, and we appreciate each other for the unique individual that they are. And I hope that through all the inhumanity that's going on, we still keep our humanity and care for each other as we go forward.
One point, oh, go ahead. No, mine's completely separate, so.
I just wanted to say too, that as council, I think we should prepare ourselves for potential happy increases to be further secured as well with the result of the new court department, the new time justice. So just by I, we could see price just go up.
And last year was shocking, but.
Last year was shocking, this year will be equally. So I think just to respond to the mayor's top five priorities there, I think that perfectly towards a focus on things.
Well, one thing I wanted to just highlight in your administrative update, you had also provided the capital projects, Q one, twenty twenty-five project sheets and the citywide work plan, project sheets. I wanted to ask who prepped those, because it's an entirely different format. It's wonderful.
It is wonderful. It's a million strong.
It's fantastic. Yeah, no, I, I just looked at that and I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's just a massive amount of information that really gives the details about when things are on track, what exactly we're doing, when the touch points are. It's very visual. And so I really appreciated that upgrade and I didn't want to let it go without a recognition of how wonderful that is.
I think that's a really nice compliment because I think the hope is always to give you the information the way you want it. So well done.
And I didn't even know it was you and you were going to be here. I was just going to be like, Wally, go back and tell someone that they did a great job. So.
We're lucky here. Gillian has been a tremendous utility player for us. You know, she has become the, the key person dealing with our boss cyclone. She's made friends at all levels of government that she didn't even know she needed.
And this one, I. You want to shout out there? Okay. So we are wonderfully still thirty minutes ahead. So I would suggest that we take a five or so minute break, which will probably stretch into ten minutes. And then we will come back and start that conversation on communications. Thank you. All of that. You can go get water. I'm just giving an intro. Yeah. So communications, so I could ask everybody in this room what that means, and there would all be a different answer. And so one of the things we wanted to start with here is why are we bringing this up? Let's help define the problem together so that we know our why and what we're trying to see. What are the impacts of potential communication problems and, you know, all of that? So also, you know, the truth of our situation is several years, we lost our local paper. And I think that has a huge impact. Well, it's not something that the city does. We, because we don't have a local newspaper that gathers news and, you know, really creates the central situation in our community. This came a couple on the, because we kept hearing from council over the years, you know, back to the period when Zach was on leadership with me, we were trying to go, oh, you know, we want more engagement with the public. So we thought, we ended up, you know, maybe stepping over this period of let's define the problem and figure out what we're trying to solve and went straight to let's create listening sessions so that we have an opportunity to hear from the public. And, you know, that had mixed success. Since then, we've had a conversation with council and council said, hey, we're having a really hard time reaching out to certain communities, like the Southeast Asian community. And so they tasked us with going back to that. That has become one of those situations where, you know, staff has said, we don't really have a connection there. And so thinking through all of these as concepts of, okay, there's this feeling in our gut that there's something here that we need to address. But I don't know if everybody is on the same page about what the problem is. So we want to start there and then get into the impacts and potential solutions. So does anybody want to start on what they see as some of the problems of communications in the area? And I think it would be helpful, yeah, let's tilt side. You don't have to as the first person. But for the rest, then I'll know who to go around to. So Kelly.
I would say maybe just in terms of instead of defining the problem, maybe say like, if things were running super great, you know, what, what would it be? Like what would the different types of communications be, right? And then what of those are we not doing now that that would fall into the problems category?
Yeah, I think another way to address that could be creating an outcomes area. So that's something as we've done, like Title Eighteen, we said, okay, what are the outcomes that we would want out of it? I think it's a little bit difficult in a situation like this where we have such limited money. So.
Could we write down some thoughts?
Yeah, let's, let's explore that. Do you want to do? Success. Yeah. So is there anything you want to throw out there or was that just a?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I have thoughts on success, even kind of, you know, going back to what you said. There's some, there's like multiple desire to output, right? There's like success, it's like people know, have good information and and then there's also the, we proactively reach out to people or, you know, we have a pulse of what's happening in the community and what people care about.
Okay, so I heard pulse and kind of know what people care about and that there is truthful or trusted information out there and available. Okay.
I think truthful and trusted because those are very different.
Different, yeah.
You could have one or the other. Or both, or neither.
So what I heard was both an inward and an outward. So one of the things you'd like to know or you'd like to see as a success measure is that we know a pulse of what the community cares about. So that's a, you know, we understand the community. So I think that needs to be up there.
Can I ask the council member a question? And by understanding the community, you mean like different council members are at different things and are able to, in the community, able to come back and share that information?
I'm, I'm honestly not here because that's, that would be like a strategy. Okay. But the kind of outcomes, like you have a pulse of those, but not.
That makes sense. Yeah, and I think I would also say from my perspective, I don't want to limit this conversation to how council communicates. I'm also just thinking about what is the situation we have? Like I said, I brought up the local newspaper, and that's not something that council or staff does. But it creates a situation in our community that is something that we deal with. So I would like to write that down. So it's an understanding of how do I, you put it as, we have a pulse of the community.
Yeah. Where is that called? Problem?
I think that's like success.
That's a success metric is we have a clear understanding of what the community cares about, what their ideas are. So, Tola.
Broad and then a narrow. Broadly, public engagement in general post-COVID is way down, right? We used to get tons and tons of people coming to council meetings. I, I think we get about the same amount of communication as we got in the old days. But we had so much more public coming to us at council meetings before COVID. And it just, it hasn't come back essentially at all.
And that's a good point to put in and say, there is a change pre and post-COVID.
Yeah, and I just don't believe, I, I don't believe that we're doing less vital or, or relevant work. I think it's just that whatever reason, people stopped coming and we're not getting that input elsewhere. And then more narrowly and specifically, you mentioned Southeast Asian. South Asian specifically, both South Asian, the South Asian and Hispanic communities in the city represent tenish percent of the population. We never hear from either group except, you know, in proclamations and awards that are given out to community organizations. So I have a real concern that significant populations in our communities, for whatever reason, never reach out to us except about maybe officially creative use.
Yeah, and I think there's good questions there. Is it because there's a lack of trust? Have we not created the connection that it gives them? There's, there's a ton there. Yeah. Chris, then Zach?
Yeah, I think it's actually broadening that, Tola. I think that we hear from a very small slur of, and I. Yeah, I think it's actually broader than that, Tola. I think that we hear from a very small sliver of, and I think this is my why. Uh, very small sliver of the population, a lot. And this is, this isn't a Fredo eighty twenty thing. This is a two percent, ninety eight percent. And um, and we don't know how to connect with that. Let's make it a little more realistic. Let's say it's eighty five percent. We do not know how to connect with the eighty five percent of the population. Regardless of where they came from, what their ethnic background is. Um, they don't really, um, as long as we're not messing stuff up, they don't care. And so they're not gonna, you know, and I think, I really believe public comment is down because we're not taking on many controversial topics that we have in the past. So I think the issue is how do we get people to care when they don't care? And that's my why. It's get people to care about what the city is doing. When they're worried about getting the kids to soccer, they're worried about their kids' grades, they're worried about their job, you know, how much, you know, all of these things that. We call life. And that has nothing to do with the services the city government is providing because by like we're doing a pretty darn good job. So how do we get them to care when they don't care? That's my why.
Okay, and there's tons we could continue to go into that. Why are they not engaging? Or is it how we're putting the information out? Is it that we aren't taking on, you know, controversial topics? There are a lot of potential reasons. So Zach and then Kelly? You can leave it up. It just reminds me to come back to you.
Oh, well, I think it's important to point out first, and I'm not sure if you mentioned this. But this is nowhere, this is nowhere near unique to Isipong. This is a problem that plagues local governments all over countries. Um, and it's not critical current communication efforts at all here. It's just a fine problem, right? So yeah, very, very prominent, well documented. For that, I have a conference that you and I went to. We had a whole part line. Engagement, big deal, sale of the team. Um, but there are kind of two buckets. I wanted to think about the whole kind of that. Chris is something a little bit. Um, the first bucket is. Pretty hard to address, but to me it seems like information overload, uh, and attention overload. Um, no matter how we communicate, we are competing in it. You're competing in like this attention marketplace where with TikToks and Instagrams and other content. Um, and it's very challenging to get city content through that. Um. And then like Chris was saying, people have busy lives and many responsibilities. So kind of all of this, in my mind, the impact is. Uh, it leads to a lack of awareness and people, people don't even know what they don't know, right? But just like us. And so, um, that's one bucket that seems much more difficult to solve. Um, and uh, and the other bucket of things in my mind seems to be around kind of timing and complexity of communications and messaging. So, um, very often government communications in general can feel reactive or transactional. Um, too soon or too late, uh, too vague or too bureaucratic. And finding the right balance is hard, right? And, and being able to steal complex information down into. Uh, approachable uh, messaging that's relevant to data lives is challenging. Uh, and it's made even more difficult by this competition for attention. Uh, and of course, limited city resources at all as well. Um, and so then this in my mind, or actually, and then also. Um, residents are really most often engaged when an issue is directly impacting them, just development next to them or something like that. And by that time, key decisions might already have been made. And that to me seems like one of the biggest problems because that leads to. Um, apathy and distrust, which then creates the conditions for misinformation, right? In the community. And it also leads to those gaps in engagement where we have important voices missing from the table. So those are kind of some of my initial thoughts. There's this bucket of things that maybe we can. Um, have solutions in around timing and complexity and how, and how are we. Uh, messaging with the community, but there's this other one that is much higher level despite for attention, which is really, really challenging.
Yeah.
Right, I'm on that one. So I think, uh, what I wanted to say is. I agree with that entirely. I think government information is inherently. Uh, not as trustworthy as if we had an independent newspaper or some other kind of news source. So the problem I see is that how do we. Create an independent as a government agency? And if, we really can't do that. You know, we can't create that independent source because. We're the creator of the information. So it's sort of a double bind. So I guess the question is, how do we encourage or uh. Uh, can somebody incentivize an independent, trustworthy source of information? I don't know if we can.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say that the source of all is trust that might exist between a resident and their government. It's because of this independency. So yeah, I mean, I feel like a lot of it also comes from engaging with the, with government. And then maybe there is a closed loop, so they don't understand how they're input. As factored into our decision making or, um. When they finally do hear about a certain engagement effort around something that's happening near them, it's too late to provide. The kind of feedback that would be useful to actually crafting the solution for too far down or so on. So, so I think there are probably a lot of, a lot of things that feed into that kind of mistrust. I don't know how to answer your independence question.
Barb, I think the kind of a follow on to where you were going. Do you think the barrier is mistrust? Is that why we're not, why we're having difficulty connecting with the public or is that a contributing factor? Or is it a big one, a little? I'm just trying to get a sense of where you think that is in terms of magnitude.
Well, I think part of it is what Zach's talking about earlier, which is overload of information. We're, we're competing in this huge marketplace where information is just ballbarding people. But I think it just seems to me that as government agency, people can't trust what we put out a hundred percent. Because we're, we're creating the issues at the same time of communicating. We, we are the doers.
Yeah, no, I get that.
As well as the information providers. And so they trusted independent sources looking at it critically.
I would also throw out there, I, I wouldn't have said that mistrust is as much of an issue. Until the experience with the last two school bonds. Um, and as you know, many people don't understand that the city and the school district are different. And so a little bit of that mistrust and misinformation that is out there bleeds over. It's also what's happening at the federal and state level. There's a goose outside of the door there. Yeah, that's, that's cool. Um. And you see, that's the attention span that we're dealing with as we come through. I just wanted to give that as an example and everything. But yeah, I, I would say I think there is an increase in mistrust and. You know, how government is seen.
Maybe it's more like skepticism.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, fake news works. It works all the time.
Mm hmm.
And that's, yeah, that's right. It's a problem. So there are people, there are players who want to create mistrust. And use fake news very effectively.
Yeah, okay. Kelly?
So I think one of the problems that we've identified is kind of the lack of trust of the news and I view that everyone has said it's like with, you know, government. Ultimately, government causes on sub-level PR, which is different than parallel. And so there's always, you know, we're never going to be like, oh, it's like, it's the mayor's newsletter is never going to say like an investigation into this, that or the other.
Right.
Yeah, or I mean, so, and especially with some of these things coming up, you know, with jail or with developments. If there is like a local blog that like looked at all the developments, like, oh, here's what's happening this week, just so that, you know, just like unbiased, like getting ready to look out there. I, I mean, that would be amazing, but I, again, you know, some of the problems are like, oh, local news is declining across the country. Because of, because people are getting the news from media and because, you know, the ad from you. I mean, this ad spend in general chipping away from local news towards Google and Facebook. And now Facebook doesn't even put actual news sources or fact check or anything like that. And so we're kind of like swimming upstream in terms of, you know, just what people are spending their time, what media people are spending their time consuming. I think. I think people also just don't. How she's, I think one of the things is that it is really hard to figure out what's going on. Just the biggest of this in the meeting, here's like a one paragraph summary check, where I think, you know, if Zach's log is kind of talking about that. I'm not like, yeah, it's been a fish, really, why? And, and that's more just, I mean, people aren't, that's going to test us because we're on council and we like have our own views on things. But I think, you know, having some, because we have to track everything in detail. But like, is there a way to make it, because right now, like if you're an interested member of the public and you go to the city website, there. It's very difficult to find out what's being discussed or like what's some background context of. It's very like, you have to know the policy landscape to, to be able to agree or understand.
Okay, let's put that as a problem statement because I saw Connie dip her head up and go, yeah, it is really hard to. Understand what's going on, keep track of things. Um, so, yeah. So the other thing before we go to Chris, I want to look at is really this concept of the source of media. And how that can impact trust and attention span and other things. I reflect back on this as someone who lives in the Highlands who gets the connections newsletter. Um, and it, I don't know whether it's the format. Or whether it's because it's coming from a community association. But it seems to, I read it with a different eye than I do. A blog post or a social media um, post or something like that. So is there, am I the only one who sees that? Is that something that anybody else sees as potentially? Part of the landscape there? Yeah.
Well, and I was gonna say, I mean, connections up in the Highlands is a very established program to. Around sets, work lately started behind. So. Um, I think there's an element of trust and just consistency there, but, but to credibility.
Yeah, so it's something about who the writers are. From my perspective, it's also something about how the information is delivered. Um, because it used to be a newspaper, now it's a print magazine that comes to your door. It has that sense of legitimacy in that way that I think is important, which you don't get necessarily off of social media. Okay. And I don't know if I would define that as a success criteria. I think legitimacy is important, but I'm not ready to say the only way to achieve that is it's something that comes to your door. I think that's just part of the landscape of communications that we need to be aware of as far as. That's an aspect of the nature of trust. So I, again, I don't want to.
Yeah, circle legitimacy.
Yeah, I don't want to get into solutions yet. It's just, this is the way my mind thinks about when we're talking about. Outbound communication and how people understand what's going on in the city, some of that. Um. They disagree with me. Agreement, fantastic. I love your interpretation. Do you have something on this?
On the legitimacy point, I would say, honest, among people my age, it's actually just like disturbing how much people, how much stuff people put into when they see on social media. It is like, people will be like, oh, I, I see this like Instagram post and it seems legit because it's ten squares with text in them. I'm going to repost them on my server. And I mean, it's really scary. And so I think there's some, like, maybe we should be using that kind of format, be like, this thing explained, like on social media with, in that same format. Because that is actually how people are getting their information. Like people that read their newsletter, that's already like. More in, I'm not necessarily like too much, because you could actually put like the content of a newsletter article just on Instagram. So I think that's, it's, it's actually kind of disturbing because when we can do it anywhere where there's sources that are cited. But also most, I mean, there is just like the level of depth that you can get into there is not fantastic.
I think you've also brought up the point that different generations are going to have different experiences with both technology. And, um. You know, print, that they might not, you know, some people might not open print and have any, any inclination to do that. While others aren't necessarily online getting that. So, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the different cultures, different languages.
Yes, good point.
Different cultures, different languages, word and different.
And to that point on the different languages and different cultures, even just like some cultural communities are completely different apps. Like Chinese community is on WeChat.
Yeah.
And it's like, there's a whole world of like group chats for people on there and there's some wild stuff that my parents are showing me. And we have no presence there. And so there's like, they could turn information with information. But it's, I mean, it's also all in Chinese, so it's hard.
Chris?
So I got, I'm just kind of, I'm doing a little summary here, but I'm hearing a number of things. And one of them is around misinformation and mistrust. And so I, I personally don't know that that's a huge issue at the city level, but I do talk to people who say, uh, they refer to this nefarious city, which then I have to say that part of. Um, the city is doing this nefarious stuff and it's like, no, no, they're not. And, um, you know, don't say that because I'm, I, that is me. So, um, I think that there, there is pockets of mistrust and we need to take those apart and understand what the root cause of that is. And so I think one of the things, looking at what Barb is writing up here, is there's a real great opportunity here for some root cause analysis, which I think will help us a ton. Um, if we know what we're trying to achieve. Um, the second thing is, I'm going to pick up what Zach was talking about, which is around outrage politics. Um, what we have discovered at the national level is the only way to get any airtime is to say stupid and outrageous stuff. And I don't want to go there. So, I mean, we could do this. We could, we could, we could start telling all sorts of, you know, fabulous stories and people would definitely tune into our. To our website to find out what fabulous stuff is going on and it'll go viral. So I think understanding that, um, mind share is really hard to get right now. And to get mind share, you have to be outrageous. You have to do something to get people's attention. You gotta go and grab them. I'm, I'm kind of liking Kelly's idea about how do we, you know, deliver things in, you know, something that's a little, um. A little more eh.
Easier to digest.
Easier to digest. Thank you. Bite sized chunks. Um, and then the last thing is I'm looking at a Pew study from, uh, all the way back in twenty twenty four, you know, a couple of months ago. Um, the number of people getting their news in print has gone from since twenty twenty. Twenty twenty four has gone from five percent down to four, so it's not going anywhere but down. The number of people getting it from radio is higher. Um, the number of people who are getting it from television is declining. And you know where everyone's getting their news? Yeah, so it's social media. So, um, and then I'm going back to our last community survey. Where, you know, we asked, you know, who's watching channel twenty one? Absolutely nobody. Um, so, you know, let's stop trying to pretend like that's a really great way to reach the public. Um, where are people getting, if you look at the community survey, where they're getting it? From our website. So let's engage with that. I think what Autumn has been doing with, with more push, um, I'm loving what the police department is doing with social media. But, I mean, that's kind of more on the solution side of things, but I'm saying, you know, let's, let's look at where, you know, it's all about where people live. You know, we went to the market because we wanted to be physically where people were. So let's take, if we want people to hear what we're saying, let's take the message where they're, where they're, where they're looking. But it's all about how do we get people to care if you don't care?
So, I mean, one of the things we should be honest about is it's not like there were great. Non-biased sources of news about the bonds, that if only people went to them.
Yeah.
The world would be a better place, right? Uh, Debbie Burdo used to pay somebody to be smart and, and collect and sift through information. And write pieces that actually intelligently aggregated information in a way that would make people more educated when they read them. Those things. Those things many times don't exist at the moment. So the problem isn't just people are going to, you know, bad social media sites. It's that, um, intelligent, uh, integrated views of these problems, where people could really feel like they're getting a, a good overview, don't exist, right? If you wanted, if you, if you were pro-bond, you could go find people saying pro-bond things. If you were anti-bond, you could find people saying anti-bond things. But that, that thing where you felt like you were smarter after reading it, those things are really hard to find nowadays. And I don't, I don't have the solution on that, but I just want to point out that one of the, one of the fundamental issues is that that quality of information is oftentimes missing at the municipal level. We could get it for Seattle, we could get it for King County, we, we get it for the state, we're getting it even for the east side, much less for our fair town.
And do you think that's because people's attention spans?
No, it's, it's because, there's probably only one knowledge worker's worth of, uh, but demand for that, right? Like Debbie could hire a person to do that, and they could cover Isaguán in Spanish. But taking that one person's worth of value of having that function out there, and distributing it among fifty nonprofit, uh, uh, social media sites doesn't, doesn't work as a model. Somebody's got to figure out how to, um, how to, how to make that work economically, because none of us are going to go quit our day jobs and spend fifty hours a week analyzing Isaguán Spanish political politics.
Maybe in some ways, the economy of information does not support the depth of analysis.
That people would find useful beyond the pro time. Always find the pro, you can always find the time. But that only takes you so far.
Yeah.
Thanks. Uh, there's a commercial on TV that says, you know, boring is, is good. Boring launches the rockets in space and all those other things. And, and defining the problem, city, local government frankly is boring, but it gets the people on the road to work. They turn on the water faucet and the water works. They flush the toilet and it works.
Generally.
And, you know, garbage pickup, as the mayor says. So, to find the problem, do we want to be different than being boring? Now, you know, if we want to be something different than boring, we're going to social media and we're doing all those other things. But if we want to be boring, because that's the nature of our work, we don't want to change who we are, maybe we're looking at the wrong problem. So, uh, from, from my point of view, you know, if we look at impacts and success, it's, it's kind of, how much are we out in the community? Chris pointed out that they're, you know, coming to the market where the people are was a good idea. And going to where people are, I think, is what we're not doing enough of. And, you know, I listed seventeen things, sixteen things on a list of community events, community things that are happening that I could go to throughout the year, right? And that's more than one a month, but we're not, and then I looked to see how many I, I went to this past year, just self-evaluate. I only went to about eight of them, right? But there are eight others that I could go to to talk to people. And I guess impacts, to me, seems that, are they getting truthful information about the things they're concerned about? And things that are going on in the city, there's a Venn diagram that, that's that little slice that people care about that city government does, and the boring stuff that we do, that we need to convey to people. And that is different for every person, but if we're not out in the community looking and talking to people, we're not going to have any measure of success, because we're not even in the game trying to get their attention, or trying to get them to care about stuff that's going on.
So you're falling into a little bit more of the, what we do is boring, and people, it, you know, the ninety percent of their attention isn't on the areas that we're doing, but maybe there, where that overlap is, we can interact.
There's that slice, and are we going to where people are and meeting them, where they are to talk about what they care about?
Okay. Um, I agree with the, like, it's boring. The other question is, how much do people actually need to care about that, you know? Like, is it okay that the average person didn't engage with government? Probably. But does that mean that we should just advocate our responsibility to provide unbiased neutral information? No. Because if something does come up, then we can be like, then, you know, there can be a record of people to actually look at that is, you know, trusted, accurate, factual information. But I think, I don't think those two things are necessarily in tension, right? It's like, oh, because it's boring, then there's a demand from the community for news, so maybe we don't need to prioritize it. I think, and maybe it's just because I sit where I sit, but like, it is, it is a useful community service to have that information available to people, regardless of whether they choose to care about it or not. And I, I mean, you know, people might care, might not care, but I think, I think just with the way that local news has gone in this country, it's, it's not going to come back. And so what are some alternative models of getting that information that could, that work? And, you know, for all, and even like at, you know, you mentioned there's journalism at the state and, uh, you know, Seattle County, state level, the number of reporters at the state level has also gone down like dramatically, you know? They don't have enough people to cover all the community hearings, and that's a huge loss for us as a society. And, and so generally, I think, like, there, I think the problem of like us getting out into the community is like kind of a different question than like the providing the unbiased news, right? Because like, for us, we want to, you know, be out there in the public here for people, but that's different than having, like, just like a news source that has the information in a trustworthy way.
Yeah, one is inbound information from the community and creating that connection. The other one is outbound information to the community that they may not pay attention to a lot of time, uh, but it's different. I think one of the reasons I think this conversation is important, even though what we do in many cases is boring, is I'm just seeing this increased, like I said, with the bond, um, mistrust. And I want us to recognize and understand the impacts on us of that. You know, if we were to look to go out for a public safety facilities bond, I think where society is and how we communicate and create that, um, sense of trust and place and all of those things could have a big impact on us. And so the, the other part of it is just, you know, where are we if people don't trust us? Chris?
I want to go back to why, because I, I don't know that we really have done a good job of defining why, why this matters, why now, why are we having this conversation? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of hearing an undertone of, of mistrust. We have to do better. We have to reevaluate our communications, because, uh, there is misinformation and mistrust. So maybe that's a why. Uh, maybe there's another why, which is, um, you know, we, we're not hearing diversity of, of voices and inputs. And those are, if I was to kind of listen to everything that's been talked about, those are the kind of, the only two whys that I, I guess picked up. Is there, is there other, other whys that we, why we're having this conversation today? You know, misinformation and, and making sure all the voices are heard? Because, because we're talking about a lot of solutions that I don't think really, um, if I look at it, really address those whys.
I think part of research, yeah, I felt this important conversation is going forward. We know we'd like to, at some time, do something about facilities. Uh, we know that there are going to be more controversies coming up. Um, and we saw what happened to the school district during the bond election, and uh, misinformation just seems to be growing. And how are we going to address that so that we get to go forward in a more positive way and that our community is with us? Uh, and that does not mean they agree with us. We're not trying to force agreement. But what we are trying to do is allow enough information to be out there and to be ahead of, uh, the people who might want to spread. A lot of people spread, uh, conspiracy theories and misinformation, just because they don't have any other information. It's sort of a vacuum out there. And so they speculate. And when they speculate on social media, it gets carried further and further, and it gets amplified, and, uh, we're just in a different environment in terms of communications, knowing where we're going in the future. How do we kind of get ahead of that? And change the trajectory, or at least, at least make an effort to change the trajectory. Well, that's a hard word to say.
What I would say is, I think the, uh, so if we're looking at this time period, post-COVID, we have fewer people coming in. Maybe that's because we aren't talking about as, you know, in, you know, many things that are in somebody's particular neighborhood. But I think this attention economy idea of people have so many things to care about, and how do we, do we have the responsibility to make sure that our information breaks through that? Or are we okay with saying, we put the information out there, we put it where people are on social media, we put it on our website, and they just didn't have the interest to see it? So, attention versus desire?
Yeah, and I just, uh, you said something that just really kind of, I'll be hitting a nerve, but it was a big aha moment for me.
Yeah.
When we've talked communications historically, we've always been about listening. Now we're talking about telling.
Yeah.
And so we're actually pivoting the conversation about communication into, uh, how do we get our message out, not how do we listen to what's going on in the community? So I think that that's, um, I guess, it's just aha. So.
Yeah. That's why I said, let's define the problem, because for often, we were talking about, oh, how does council get out to where people are? Like, there's this bigger concept of.
Can I just, should I begin and say? Democracy is under assault. And how we communicate with our students that make a difference about how resilient this community is in a democratic system?
I, I think the community connectivity part is really important, you know, um, I think certain neighborhoods of the city have a very easy sense of self. But without a connection that creates community cohesiveness, we, we lose that sense of who we are as a community. And I think particularly in times when we need resiliency and emergencies, uh, that sense of knowing where to go for information and knowing that you trust the people that are doing it is important. So in some ways, I also see it as a public safety thing, because when you trust your community, you feel connected. So I would put that down there, community connection. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that. Okay, um, Zach and then Kelly?
I think I was first. I think in addition to the misinformation, there's the lack of information, right? It's like, right now, I don't think there is actually, you know, someone's like, oh, I want to keep up with what's happening on city council. You can either watch the YouTube video that's three hours long, read the minutes, which don't actually have that much information, or that's about it. So, you know, just like, we actually aren't putting out, like, just basic information about what's going on in, in, in terms of like what the city council might do. And it's not necessarily the job of city council to do that, but I think there should be, you know, and again, maybe it's like, maybe that's not something that's that important, maybe not all cities are doing that, but like, that, I feel like that's something that kind of the base level of like knowing what's kind of happening in this city that we just don't have information on. And I think, and, and people are susceptible to misinformation when there's no information out there, right? Like, you can't just suddenly have someone pop up and be like, I have all of the facts about the school bonds, and they just like, didn't even exist before that. And people, they're like, who are you? Like, you must have some weird ties to like this side or the other side. And so it's like, I think part of the communication, like getting information out there is actually building that trust.
Building a trust and a history of information, but as others have pointed out, people have a freaking busy life.
Yeah.
So just because we put it out there doesn't mean that they're engaging with it, but maybe that concept of government is difficult and messy and long-term, how do we create ease of information or break down that thing? Yeah.
I, I want to plus one that, you know, I went to, to pick out another governmental organization. I went to the school board meeting a couple weeks ago, and I had to leave about a half hour before I was done. I had no way the next day to find out what decision had been made. All I was looking for was they had had a conversation earlier in the evening, they had tabled a motion, did they come back to the motion? Did they vote on the motion, right? And I had no mechanism to get that, and we don't do that either in a quick timeline, right? Um, we don't, you know, same day or next day, publish basic information about the decisions that we've made. And it's, this is an endemic problem all the time, because I've complained about PEC doing that, right? You pick for us to review PEC things, the fact that they wait three weeks to publish the minutes from the PEC meetings makes it unusable for us. And so we're not the only offender, but I just want to point out, I think Kelly's point about, where do you even, where do you even get basic information about the decisions that are made by governmental organizations? And it might be, and I don't want to say as easy as, because it's entirely on staff and zero on us, but you know, the next day, spending an hour, you know, having a protocol where you give, you know, just the facts man, and, uh, just put down the critical information. It's a starting point.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Zach, I think.
Yeah, well, and then you have to think about whether or not something like that would even be effective in spaces that we want to communicate in. Like, we actually do put out, like, posts and social media council is, there is looking at this tonight. But I imagine those do pretty poorly compared to like the most recent communiquely assault episodes. Anyway, so that's, that's just, I wanted to also say, just to see the difference of why, um, the community themselves has identified this as a problem in our strategic plan, right? So we have a, um, objective, which is all focused about being a regional leader and civic engagement. Um, I, I don't think I would necessarily say that we're a regional leader, civic engagement, so being able to go into this problem seems very timely and relevant. Can I just comment on that? The Strategic Planning Task Force said that was important, the community didn't say that was important. Because quite honestly, it's, you know, that's what, actually, I think one of the things that concerns me is we, we talk to the same people a lot. And we talk to the people who want to be talking. Um, and, and so I don't, I don't think we really know what the community wants. But that's more of a, a listening than it is a telling.
Yep, yep. Um, I'm gonna go to Kelly, and then I want to make sure that we have time for staff to tell us what they're doing, and then we can kind of cohesively bring all of this together, um, so.
I have a question real quick.
Yeah.
Before we go into like, what are we doing communications, would it be appropriate to ask staff to say, to comment on the problem too, like, is there anything you've heard here? Or that you didn't hear here that you might have suspected, based on your professional experience working in communications or just what? We have time for that.
I'm sure we have a lot to talk about and learn, and you share many of these, uh, concerns and goals.
Okay, um, so I wanted to also offer a bit of perspective as, you know, I've worked with an organization that has a large newsletter following with like seven thousand people, and we have a website with our publications going back forty-six years, which is Space Clouds Club. And, you know, having that archived information, I was like, does anyone actually read the old ones from like the nineteen seventies? People put it seven days, someone came up, oh, like Harvey Ranning was doing this wild stuff back in the eighties. He's like, there's some crazy stuff in the old Alfred, and I was like, you actually read this stuff? So I think there is value in having that out there, even if there's only, you know, one or two people out there actually reading it. So for example, like, with, with your comment, like, oh, do we get engagement on this on social media? I mean, in the moment, maybe that doesn't matter, but for people who are like, oh, this thing is happening now, can I go back into all of the record of like what happened in all the city council meetings, see, you know, what city would make when, what the, what discussions happened? It is useful to have that information publicly available. And that, because it serves as kind of a trap, you know, then people can look back at what happened later. So if people aren't engaged now, okay, that's, that's fine, but like, I think we need to, like, in terms of like good governance and transparency, which for us, I think, communicating what's going on, even if no one's looking at it immediately, is like having that.
I'm gonna do a little bit of summarizing in that a lot of our previous years' conversations about communications has been about us going out into the public, us, you know, being involved. But some of this is identifying maybe a different, you know, outward communication, and we've talked about some. outward communication and we've talked about some of the whys of, hey, that was part of the strategic plan. Hey, you know, there's just this general sense of community connectiveness. There's this larger idea of the national political environment and mistrust, misinformation. We've got this concept of government trust, the school bond, our potential need to communicate what our needs are as a community for facilities. We've also talked about, hey, maybe there's some lack, I don't want to say lack of basic information out there, because it could be out there and I just don't know where it is. But there's a need to have basic information about what, what your government is doing and to not have to sort through three hours of meeting in order to figure that out. So ease of accessing information and how things start flowing through the government. We've also talked about, maybe we're, even if our, even in our task force and boards and commissions, only hearing from a small portion of voices that have readily raised their hands. And there's a lot of people out there that we are not reaching. Maybe it's not the two percent, ninety-eight percent, but there's certainly a difference in connectivity to certain people. We talked about the attention economy and how people's attention spans and all of their needs in their lives are creating, you know, so many things that they're paying attention to that maybe it's a little bit difficult, especially with some of the boring stuff that we do, to reach into that void. Is there anything else that you would add over there?
We've got to hear.
Yeah.
You should go and take picture of this.
Yeah.
That's your, yeah, great.
Yeah.
Make sure.
Yeah. Take a picture. Yep, okay. So, I want to hand it over to you guys both to talk about what you heard, respond, tell us what we're doing, how you're approaching it, et cetera.
Um, thank you so much for this time, for us to carve out Saturday to talk about communications. Uh, we have not come and shared with council what we do as a team in the years. We look back and it was pretty much the start of COVID. And it was us talking about, you know, COVID safety signs in parks. So it's really, it's been a while. So, thank you for carving out some time during your retreat to cover this topic. Just to start, I was wiggling in my seat, looking at all of this and hearing this discussion. And two things just right off the bat, before I forget, that I wanted to address, is I'm so thankful that there is acknowledgement around how much we battle for attention on just the mass amount of information and news that's out there. And then on top of here too, that city news is born. So, and many of you may have heard this before, but what's a principle of our communications program is how do we have a good balance of vegetables and fruit? So, why would I follow the City of Issaquah's Facebook account? Why would I open up a B News, right? It's why we, the City of Issaquah owns a Sasquatch costume. It's why we, you know, sometimes post really pretty drone shots on our social. It's fruit. And then we can slip in vegetables and some things that we want to make sure our community knows about. And we have to find that right balance. And that's, that's a consistent discussion that we have with our POMS team is, we have, we have an obligation to be sharing what's going on as far as city news, but we have to compete against everyone else. And so I'm just really happy that that happened organically without me even saying it. So I just am really thankful that the discussion went that way. So, just to start out. Thank you. Uh, so staples of our program has always been engagement on city programs, projects and policies. Uh, the bread and butter of our program, as well as providing excellent customer service. So our communications team is the virtual front desk for City Hall. So we're the ones answering all the questions online, or helping people find resources that they need. So, we pretty much are at the first line for customer service, as well as program delivery. There is just, you know, running operations at the city of, you know, what's the menu of the senior center? When is the pool gonna be open? Who's in jail? You know, it's, it's the day-to-day just service that we provide that communications is a part of. One area that also has been brought up is, you know, we've lost our local newspaper. It's something I've also heard in the community too, right? Is, I don't feel as connected anymore to what's going on in the community. While there's no way to replace Issaquah Press or to replace unbiased journalism, there are some areas that our team has stepped back in the past year or so and really thought, how can we fill some of those holes that the press did provide? Uh, and a few that, that I know as starting my career at Issaquah Press were around community storytelling. And so we always found success in knowing that somebody cut out one of our articles or photos and put it on the fridge. I mean, that was just quintessential Issaquah Press. That's, that was the service that was provided, of course, along with local news. But that community building side of things of seeing your kid in the paper or knowing what the score was at the local game, that's community building. So storytelling is one. The second that was really big at Issaquah Press was the calendar page. It was a full page and it was everything coming up for the next week. And it was knowing what time the club was meeting at that you were interested in or what was something that was happening that you may not find anywhere else. And that was the place people went to was the calendar. And then third was what crime happened? What, what are police up to? What's, what's the gossip of what's happened, you know, in my neighborhood when I saw a police car? Those, so those are some, some areas. And you'll hear today as we talk about it, I'm so proud of our team. We have found ways to start delivering some of those services as well to our community. Just launched uniquely Issaquah, which is very much based on community storytelling. Last year, we have redesigned our Issaquah Insiders so that there's way more calendar-based items, which we're finding a lot of people are clicking on versus some of our flashier stories. Um, and then please launched a police blogger. Um, so there is a recap that is issued every week of what happened with police and what kind of crimes they responded to. And we've heard great feedback on that. Uh, so just quickly, all the communication tools. And so we have a limited team, three point five FTEs. These are all the tools that we manage. It includes a website, all of our social channels, video, which includes both produced pieces as well as coverage of, of meetings, newsletters, engagement with our neighborhoods, being at community events, surveys. Our team managed eighteen surveys last year. That's how many times we asked the community to ask for feedback. Uh, Princeton materials, physical signage, podcasts, all of our subscriber emails, which is pretty extensive. And then community meetings.
Yeah.
So you say neighborhoods, I'm actually just curious, like, what is the state of our like, relationship with each other? Do we use them as partners? I'm just curious, what is that dynamic?
Yeah, yeah, we, and I have to drop more to add. Uh, we have an email list still and so of, you know, kind of neighborhood leaders. So if there's something that's general to the whole community, we'll say, hey, like, for example, we're looking for task force members, right, for the facility task force. And send out an email to all the different neighborhood connections that we had of, you know, everyone. So we have that kind of communication. We also have our subscriber emails that are divided by neighborhood. And so when we have community news, we can be really specific about that. And next door. And you'll hear more about just how many people are still active on next door in Issaquah. We can be very specific in targeting certain neighborhoods if a road project's going on or if we, something's impacting just that community.
And one more thing too is, so for example, the Woods of Issaquah, and the Woods and Morgan's Ridge invite me to their major wedding. So, some neighborhoods do that, some condo associations do that. And that's a really great opportunity because I get to sit there and listen to that particular neighborhood for about an hour. And then we do a Q and A with the mayor. So, a lot of them are more active than others, but, you know, it's fun to go to your neighborhood at once.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna jump in and just say, on next door, it would be really good if we sometime had a conversation about council members' interaction with next door. I'm very reluctant to get on there as a council member, but there are times where I've thought, wow, this is misinformation. But I, you know, I just don't feel comfortable doing that. But maybe we could have a conversation at some point about how the council or how, maybe we can just report to you. This is what I saw next door, you know, so somebody that would correct it. But it seems like a lot of uncorrected information goes on next door.
Jarvis is just next door and it all shows.
Next door is so local and so, you know, to me, next door is different than Facebook even or it's just so particular to neighborhoods, so.
There's also definitely like, you know, Issaquah Washington Facebook group or, you know, other stuff, other more local groups on Facebook.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure you're all aware of this.
Yeah, a lot of, and I would be able to talk about next door for an hour. And I, I would love to have a longer discussion with you about, uh, next door. You know, that is a platform and, you know, it's always good as a reminder that even though the city has an account, we don't see neighborhood discussions.
Yeah.
Um, and that's how next story is set up. This is for neighborhoods to talk, right? And so, you know, oftentimes, you know, we've, we've had others say, do you know, this is, this is erupting on next door? And it was like, no, you know, we, no, we don't. That's for neighborhoods to discuss with themselves. If you're, if you're acting as, and I'm putting my clerk hat on right now, I'm just guessing about here. If you're acting as a council member in official business, that is something we should talk about because that requires records retention and many other things around acting in your official capacity on city business. So that can get complicated. But it is just a reminder that yes, those are neighborhood conversations that just are happening for everybody.
Yeah.
I just want to comment on that. Um, I think we should be really, really careful. And I think when people reach out to the city, they should expect communication. I think we do a great job. I think Lindsay as council president has set a really good bar for council response when people write to the council. But yeah, people are having a conversation in next door. We should be really careful about jumping into that, right? We should always be, if somebody wants to reach out to us and talk to us, we should always be ready to listen. But that doesn't necessarily mean we go out and interject ourselves into every conversation that's going out there, that's going out there in the community. And sometimes it's painful, right? I, I see on the Facebook group, I see concern around graffiti and stuff like that. Part of me wants to reach out and do something. But I have also seen other cities that are less careful about their engagement and it's about to bite them in the butt this time here.
Yes, that's reason I don't get it.
One more question on this page, sorry. Is the City of Issaquah app a communication tool or is that primarily like, see click fix?
It, it operates mostly as an avenue to, you collect tickets for see click fix. There are ways to get to other sources of information if you have the app downloaded. But it's more of a tool to align people with what they need versus collecting information. Uh, the final thing I wanted to add to your neighborhood comment was, depending, as, as the mayor highlighted, some of the neighborhoods are more centralized in how they collect information. Council president highlighted the connections already. I mean, that's another tool we use is working with other groups to provide information. There's four or five articles now that are all city business that go out in each connection article. I saw you also had one listed in there too, both that you did. So, we use the tools we have around the, around the community to also kind of amplify our messaging.
You were just talking about cultural bridges as well.
Yes, so we just, we just had a conversation with cultural bridges. Pre-pandemic, we provided them information that kind of died as, you know, avenues changed a little bit. But we've brought that conversation back a little bit. Their next magazine comes out in April. We've added content to that. They're going to provide us with translated materials in return. So finding connections again, specifically with some of our other periodicals that come out, so other avenues of news.
So this, we've already talked a bit about this, I'm gonna kind of go quickly over these slides. But just, you know, the short of it is, we, we do have limited resources in communications. There's a ton of news that we need to share. So, going to where people are is our priority as a team. And over the past twenty years, accessibility to the internet is, is definitely grown among age groups. And you'll hear us today talk a lot about our digital communications and our focus there. Also, sorry, the delay is. Also, smartphone usage continues to grow up and accessibility around everyone just having a phone. And so, as well as home broadband, among, you know, different ages and income levels, where they live. One thing that we also talk about as a team often is ensuring that our content online is mobile friendly. So gone are the days that we're uploading PDFs and you're doing this, trying to register your kid for a class, right? We have to be mobile friendly first because so many people who want to engage with us are doing it on a very tiny screen. So, something to keep in mind. So Thomas is now gonna really fly through a whole lot of data just to give you an opportunity to see what some of our reach is. And just wanted to highlight, just seeing over those past twenty years, you know, how many people now are using the internet, how much our program has turned to digital communications, how wonderful it is because we have data and we can see how many people we are engaging with, interacting with. Um, and that really helps inform us. And, you know, a big part of our team meetings every week is sitting and looking at data first. What posts did well? What didn't go well? You know, what are people interested in? Why do we think people are interested in this topic? It's something that our team talks about every week. So, just to kind of set in that stage before you go on to sell that data.
Yeah. And as Autumn alluded to, it's going to be a lot of data. If anything in particular strikes your fancy, please just let me know. We can stop and talk about it for a second. The website is the nexus of everything we do. So be it social media, reaching out to different organizations, we point everything back towards the website to be a central hub of information. A couple of you have raised the point that it's difficult to find information. It's a lot of work to try and maintain all of that and make it intuitive to a lot of different ways people look for information. Some people want to be very generic and browse through, others want to just pump it into Google and have first search result be exactly what they're looking for. And it takes a lot of work to try and make sure all those keywords and tags make sense for everyone. That being said, twenty twenty-three, or excuse me, twenty twenty-four years are complicated. Twenty twenty-four again set new records for all of our website analytics. We've never had more people in our website, we're up to over one point seven million page views. Five hundred thousand different people found information last year on our site, which is crazy when you think about our population. How many people outside of just our community are looking for details on here? New subscribers, as Autumn highlighted, these are all the various ways we categorize all the outreach we do. So we have a lot of different avenues of information we're trying to get across. Be it the very generic setup like traffic alerts for construction projects or Parks and Rec are trying to get people signed up for different projects, things like that. Or get your kid registered. All those are different avenue streams and we kind of collect those in different groups. So a subscriber basis there, we have almost fifteen thousand different people subscribe to different categories. Autumn already highlighted mobile usage too. Again, sixty percent of people are navigating just from this. It's not on computers. It's making sure all of our content, all of our thousands of pages show up and provide information on a three-inch screen. So, do a lot of work there to get it done. That being said, we also categorize a lot of information in new ways. We read us the city project map. So if you head to the city projects area, we now provide visual components for that too. You can scroll in and find a project by just a little polygon on a map and learn more about it that way too versus just webpages. I'm curious where people end up. And we heard a lot about finding ways to provide what people are looking for. Hundred and twenty-two thousand people were looking for just calendar items last year. So the events that are happening in our community are the number one thing people come to find us. Right behind it is all those news stories I just talked about. So as we put information out, where are people finding it? It's either subscriber bases or they're navigating to our website to read this news. Then come some areas I think are always interesting. We've talked a lot about Jacob Two Trees, continues to be, week in, week out, a top five page that people come to. A lot of that's tied to the fact that we have people come from outside our community using Google Maps to navigate purely to him, to make it part of a, a cultural adventure. But yeah, it's been a year and a half straight of him constantly being a presence on our website, which I find really endearing. But it highlights also how much art plays a great role in tourism too. Uh, finally then we get some more, you know, resources. The pool has a very interesting demographic. A lot of people are looking for how the, you know, pool hours adjust, how people can get, you know, use swim lessons and things like that. I mean, fifty-five thousand hits last year just on pool information is always mind-boggling to me. Then finally, the farmer's market gets seasonal and still has forty thousand hits. Almost no one is looking for recreation on the farmer's market in January, but come May every year, it's the number one page we have. So, just providing some popular content for you to think about for a second on how people are coming and navigating to our site.
So Thomas, do you create also stories like for the police department or do they do there separately?
We work together. So a lot of times, the police department will let us know that they're getting ready to. We work together. So a lot of times um, the police department will let us know that they're getting ready to share something on social. Uh, and we help amplify that by placing on the website too. So more eyes will see the information there.
So it seems like there are Facebook pages really active, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and our team's supporting and production of video. So enough color of the behind the scenes.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Uh, nevermind. I was just gonna ask where the city council webpage sits.
One step. Uh, Autumn's already talked a little bit about the blotter. Um, they, they use this content a lot of ways, right? One, we, we heard from the community that they were interested in hearing more about it. We worked with police department and helped them set up a structure that works. I think they do a great job of collecting all the information and then it's about finding other avenues to use it. So as we just highlighted, they place it on their, their Facebook page and talk about it. We've also, we'll talk a little later about maybe a podcast that we're looking to bring up with the police to start soon. Uh, that will have a segment just devoted to the blotter and interesting cases that are coming up because we know from the beauty, they're interested in learning more about those things. Social media, I think every tenth word said so far this morning may have been related to social media and that's not shocking considering how, how much of our life is devoted to that. So uh, for those who don't know, we have a lot of current social accounts across a lot of platforms. And those are just the city ones. There's also a few accounts outside of that. So we have a police department Facebook page, a police department X account and the mayor's X account is also present to relay information too. Uh, put together, it's over 3 million impressions a year. All the information I'm about to provide is the last 12 months. So if anything comes up, let me know. That relate, uh, 3 million impressions also relates to a lot of engagements. So um, it varies by platform, but over 200,000 points of engagement last year. Again, another record for the city. So we're not seeing people use less social media. It's on us to try and manage where they want to find it, make sure we're in the right places. We're gonna start with just the, the biggest one in the room. Uh, shockingly, Facebook still, despite everything, remains the best place for us to engage with people in our community. Uh, 2.4 million impressions last year. It's a 17% jump, um, which is not small. It, it continues to be a place, I think, as other accounts and other platforms see varying levels of success, people have just held on to Facebook, especially in our community in particular. Um, 20,000 people follow us there, which is a sizable amount for our community. Uh, and we've been using new strategies to try and reach them. We wanted to highlight video views because so much of our content last year, we've been focusing on trying to provide that because that's a main way people want to consume information from us this third year. Before I go too far into this, the other thing we use Facebook for is um, we already highlighted how we kind of connect with other groups, private groups when we can, although that gets into a little bit more of a complicated area, but it's around records. And we also put events up too. So a lot of our fair farmer's markets is a great example. Every Saturday there's a listed and it helps us kind of connect to the physical world because it's had a good correlation with how many people say they're going to come to the next farmer's market. And then our farmer's market staff rely like, hey, this is a really big week, but oh, we kind of knew that was going to come. So it's great, but kind of keep track of what was interesting to people. You may be curious. All right, online. Does it have any correlation to who we have actually in the city? And for the most part, it's a pretty fair assumption. We do skew uh, to higher women demographic online, but overall age group wise, it's a pretty good reflection. The one thing we've noticed is it's a little more difficult to track younger audiences on Facebook, but um, we have strategies on that to try and increase that a little bit. But it's not a shock to anyone in this room. It's a little more challenging.
Can I ask, well, sorry, why do you think there's the massive?
It's a good question. One, we've debated a lot of times. Uh, we've also internally, you know, we sort of stereotype who we're talking to online a little bit too. So there's a little bit of a chamber effect. Um, that being said, it's, it's something that we're, we're not, we don't have great information on why the discrepancy is there, only that we're trying to expand it and hopefully have a balance out of it.
And you know, and years ago, we, we had more data on Twitter, now X, that showed that that was much more of a male dominated audience in Isiqua. We don't have that data anymore on our X platform. Um, so that's an interesting question of are there other platforms, right? That um, that might be um, more balanced or that might have more men that are following us. So, yeah. Question.
It's like if, if you said, oh, well, you know, 80% of it is both pool and it's mom's checking because they're the ones that are driving kids to the pool. That would at least have a, you could be like, okay, well now I sort of understand where it's coming from.
Yeah.
It's sho- shocking to see that.
And that's just on Facebook.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, yeah, agreed.
Uh, and we have some more uh, demographic breakdowns like that per platform. You're saying Facebook is definitely the one that's used the most. Uh, Instagram, we, we don't put all our content in the same platform, the same way. Tailor each platform to what makes the most sense. So Instagram is still the place where we try and view unique ways, artistic ways to highlight our city. We're not throwing uh, we sign up for these art classes on Instagram. One, there's no link function on Instagram. And two, it's just not the target audience for that. So keeping in mind, we kind of moved it around a little bit. That being said, we had internal milestones of over 10,000 followers on Instagram last year. We all did a little mini celebration and. Um, but it, it's definitely a platform we're still using a lot for and it's, it's becoming more and more popular with our demographics. As you can see here, a little bit more balanced in terms of, that's pretty small apologies. It's close to 50%. Um, you have to consider that on Instagram, we do not have to assign genders. There's a larger gap of unspecified there. But that being said, it's, it's a little bit closer breakdown. And again, if you look at ages, we, we see that matches pretty well the census data. Uh, we've talked about X a little bit today already. Um, it's a difficult platform for us as a team to work with. Uh, it's definitely been in decline in terms of popularity. Um, that being said, we saw, we still saw, you know, new users adding to the platform. We have no plans to currently get rid of it, but we do want to remain nimble that if it's no longer a valuable tool for us, we only have so much resource we can do. Um, there is one big adjustment to why we continually use X and that is for emergencies. So you can see from this impression chart that for the most part, not as much engagement at other platforms, except for when it comes to uh, the November windstorm. So bomb cyclone, we used X to provide details on the hour to where we can send people for, where gasoline is available, where um, grocery stores were open, videos of the mayor providing updates. All of that was also one of the platforms in moderation. But because X provides a higher reach on uh, chronological timelines for people, it's our platform of choice uh, when it comes to emergencies. And you can see just from the amount of impressions we got over one month, that it's still very useful for us for that reason.
But it looks like it's trending towards zero.
That February also being a smaller month, when I pulled the data, it definitely has a little bit of a dip right there at the end. So I would, I would ignore the last month, assuming, but you can also see it. It's, it's in decline. It's, it's not as popular. Uh, we've seen some national changes that have led to more and more people abandoning the platform. Um, so keep that in mind too.
That's why our fruit social.
Don't really.
They have to four followers.
Uh, another question we hear often is how does, how does this all compare? What are we doing uh, online and is it comparable to others or um, things are really mean? For the most part, especially considering our size, uh, we often compare ourselves regionally to all of our, we call them competitors online, but it's certainly not uh, confrontational. Uh, those, those will be Bellevue, Redmond, Renton, Kirkland, uh, Mercer Island, and Samantha. Those are people we, as a team, view as who we're up against in terms of how well we're doing online. Um, I'm, I'm really proud of what our team does. Uh, it takes a lot of effort and as you can see from these charts, at least from an engagement point of view, we are miles ahead of a lot of the neighboring cities. So we've got a strategy. We feel like it works. As Autumn highlighted, it's really about making sure we're putting information out, content out, more specifically than information. Content that people want to engage with. They want to see it come across their, their uh, walls. And then now that they're following us, now we can sprinkle in those really important details of, make a, you know, emergency kit. We want you to be safe kind of thing. Cause if we did not have the content they want to see, they wouldn't be able to see it in the first place.
That first one says cross network. Just see, it is kind of hard to see. So it's cross network, X, Facebook and Instagram. And then for the green as far as our average versus our colors.
Yes. The screen is giant and somehow still looks. Um, all right, we've talked about the big ones. Uh, now we're going to some of the more niche platforms that we still use. Uh, as Autumn alluded to, we probably talk about next door for an hour straight, but I'm going to go quickly here. Uh, 60% of households in Isiqua are collected or cleaned a household. That's effectively referring to maintaining your address within the next door sphere. Um, police does a great job. The city also takes part. We've combined those impressions together to highlight when we reach out and create a dialogue over a topic. We had 139,000 impressions last year. That does not count any kind of conversations between neighbors directly because the city is not involved in that. So um, it's a good percentage to have. We are very fortunate that our next door community isn't um, as cynical as uh, some of our municipalities around us who don't want to use next door because it's very destructive environment sometimes. So we will be, however lucky it is, things that our community finds productive conversations. Some of the time, some of the time there is misinformation that we see, but uh, it's still a useful platform to put information out to people. YouTube, uh, it's not just a place where store three hour council meetings. Every piece of video content we produce lands on YouTube as a place for people to find it. We then utilize it in other areas. We embed it on our website. Uh, that includes podcasts, shorts, uh, polished produced video. All of that together. Um, records across the board for YouTube views. 4,000 hours of content was washed on our channel last year. Um, and as you can see from the breakdown, again, we're not talking about just stereotypical, you know, 20 year olds assuming YouTube. It's across the board. It gets used by all age groups. So um, very important for us both as a repository of uh, video history, especially when it comes to council meeting for that, but also a place for people to subscribe and follow us. More details is.
I asked, I'm a little confused. If there's 105,000 views, but 4,000 hours of viewing, that's like a minute and a half per engagement.
Yeah. So YouTube tracks two different metrics. Uh, depending on the length of the video, sometimes they count a view as anyone watches more than 10 seconds because it's really short form video. And if it's certain length, then it's anyone watches up to three minutes that counts as a view. But add it all together, all the time watched. Unfortunately, not everyone's watching all three hours.
No, I get, and I wouldn't expect it to, but I wouldn't expect it to be as short as.
It's pretty short. Yeah. And then that comes down to some of the videos we put out are like 20 seconds long. So after.
Oh, seconds means the average. Okay.
Any other questions? LinkedIn, um, this platform has had actually tremendous growth with the city as a tool. Uh, sure. While I can be the first person to highlight how much it's valued and, and, and a great tool for networking. The city has a few other uses for it, namely it's a great way to engage with employees. Um, when they do things, we want to make sure we celebrate them. Uh, a lot of our staff do great things every single day and there's not a lot of ways that we can promote that out to the other wider audience because normally we're focused on external things. This project got done, not John Mortensen did this work on this project. So we use LinkedIn in a different way. It's different content. We also want to make sure we highlight as a, as an organization, what we are doing. And that helps entice potential new employees to apply with us. So LinkedIn has a very specific skillset uh, of content that we go with. Uh, and as you can see from the growth, our new strategy is really seeing huge numbers of people start following us for content. It's just, one is for the city, but I think, I don't want to dismiss how important I think it is to engage with the employees directly who already work for us and celebrate their milestones and their achievements. We do it with this platform.
Uh, and before you leave it, I mean, I will refuse to get on LinkedIn for the longest time. I said, I have enough friends. It, it's just mind boggling. The number of people who apply for jobs who say, I want to work here because I've looked on LinkedIn and I see you value your employees. Absolutely stunning. And you know, people, people think well of us because we celebrate our employees. I'm like, yeah. I still can't entirely get it through my head, but it's true. Uh, and so we will continue to do it. We've got wonderful staff. They do great things. People love to be recognized. They love to have peers, uh, friends, family members, coworkers do that. So we've really leaned hard into it and it's really paying off. So. Hope to thank our, our HR staff. I mean, they've done, you know, we still have a recruitment and retention staff. Carmen Chamberlain, you know, and she spends a lot of time interviewing staff members, working with communications as far as getting nice photos of people. And the Stacy McIntry thing, my God, how many thousand views that, that, just that one uh, God, quote unquote, Stacy. Um, so it's really, really, that's the communications team and the HR staff.
Okay, we're gonna switch gears as soon as the screen catches up. Uh, anything on social before we do?
Yeah. Can I just ask how you uh, analyze whether or not like emerging social media or do you decide to pursue? TikTok or like loose guy? Like I'm not saying, I'm just saying, what's the process for like considering?
Grabbing the handle. You know, number one. Yeah. Step one. Um, you know, like you're talking about this guy, it's like being in it personally for a bit. I think it's part of it is just us understanding the platforms a bit, seeing what's going on on those platforms. Um, it sounds like there's really lovely things happening in Isiqua. So just watching that for a bit, but um, I think part of that too is uh, ensuring that we can uh, retain records. So we have to retain records on any platform. I mean, and all of it's city business, right? And so there are some platforms that are so new that that hasn't caught up yet. Um, oftentimes it's good to see how other agencies start to dabble in those before we go right forward too. So I don't, you know, I like to be ahead of the curve, but not like the first. Um, so that's part of it. Um, you know, we've looked at TikTok for a while. A lot of that frankly is capacity and that's a lot of content creation.
Yeah.
Um, and so a lot of that is just making sure that like skills are tipped to the point of that's worth our time and maybe are there other platforms that aren't anymore? And so I think a lot of that is watching those numbers, seeing how engagement is going on our current platforms. Um, for many.
Yeah. And I think we also want to dive in and change our minds. So.
Yeah.
Uh, another one is, yeah, yes, this platform is doing great. Uh, do we have the capacity to take it on? Because it's also a dialogue, right? It's not just placing content. It's then listening and hearing what people say on it and just monitoring all of that too. Um, it's a definitely a structured strategy to make sure we, before we take something, we have capacity.
There's also a different mood and a different demographic. And so maybe it fits your needs of, oh, we're not reaching this demographic. But if people aren't engaging with, they're just watching and then moving on, does it provide that value as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, newsletters. Um, hopefully everyone is familiar with this quite insider. It's our weekly newsletter that we put out, goes out to almost 9,000 subscribers every week. Um, I started 2025, less than, you know, month and a half ago. We did a refresh of it to change the design, to change the best practices for how uh, newsletters are seeing best engagement. Um, Autumn highlighted how calendar functions is something that people have been crying out for a little more from our insider newsletter. And now we've got an entire section devoted to just providing it in that kind of uh, space. Uh, it's also in a more categorized layouts. People can self-select what's important to them. Not everyone's going to read everything story, but now it's easier for them to pick and choose what they want. Um, insider is not our only newsletter. We've got the mayor's newsletter that goes out periodically, usually about every month. The park bench goes out to some 20,000 people specific on recreation news. Economic development and Green is both have their own audiences, but little bit of smaller subscriber bases and put out content as well. So there's a lot of ways we utilize newsletters to push out all of those news topics that um, are relevant on a city basis purely to specific groups. And we're going through and updating each of those newsletters this year to make them feel fresh in you.
We were just going through content as a team recently and it was like some random event at Pickering Barn had the most clicks. Cause we look every week on what people have put down and what they'd engage with on our newsletter. And it was like, of all the news this week, we gotta go to this. I forget what the event was. It's like, oh.
I'm sure Kelly Dan would, would get me getting it wrong. It was some kind of witch conference or.
Hey, remember one item in insider that I'll make.
Yeah, it's the fruit. Yeah.
Yep.
Uh. Yeah, that too. Uh, okay. So podcasts, uh, several years ago, and as a resident of Isiqua, when people learn that I also work for the city, I think we might, you know, also have some of the same experiences. There's a lot of questions of like, when's the four opening or what's the newest restaurant in town? It's that hyper local news oftentimes connected to retail, um, or to, you know, places that people visit all the time in our community. I had the same questions. I would always bug Jen on Davis Hayes, who's our economic development manager. I talked her into somehow convincing her to start a podcast with me. Um, where we would just record these conversations and really talk about what that business gossip is. Um, and we have a following. We have a good amount of listeners and viewers. Um, a lot of them email us now and say, I want you to track down this or what's going on with Taco Bell or what's going on with this or that. It's really surreal that I'm getting pitches on stories again in a very different way. But it's really fun engagement with our community where we can provide a service where if they have a question, we can help answer it. We also are providing a service to local business who don't have other platforms to be able to share the news that, you know, they're opening up or they've got an event or they've got a special going on or something that is happening. And so they feel very supported as well. And we hear from a lot of businesses, we've actually started the practice of once we post Isakuwa buzz, we email each of the businesses we've talked about and say, hey, check out, we, we highlighted you. To start that conversation for economic development, to keep that relationship. Uniquely Isakuwa is hosted by Mayor Polly. It is a way that we can tell community stories in long form. We don't have twenty minutes people's time to read something, but they will listen. And Mayor Polly does an excellent job in interviewing community members that just have fascinating stories. We just launched last week or just posted one on greedy Willingham, who's just an internationally renowned artist. And he had posted some of his content recently and it had Isakuwa in the background. Found out he lived in Isakuwa and he came over to our studio and sat and talked with Mayor Polly. It was surreal. So it's just been really fun to find people in our community and highlight their stories. And then this is just a quote out from an email that I received last month that just was wonderful to see that, again, we're not, we're never going to be the Isakuwa press when it comes to objective news source. But we are a place we can do community storytelling and share some of the news about what's going on in our community.
Well, Autumn, the other thing I think about buzz, which I, I love too, so it really is great. But it puts a face on what we think of our community may think of as a faceless bureaucracy. And that's, that's kind of a theme that I've been following lately too, is that governments are just people. We're people and we have to make that face to face connection. And even though it's a video, you put a face on the city of Isakuwa and people really appreciate that. It goes to what Russell was saying about, we need to be out there, you know, communicating person to person. So I think these are brilliant, really, really in terms of humanizing the city of Isakuwa now.
Next up, some reflections. But the next thing that I'm going to be talking about is uniquely Isakuwa. So we launched this webpage on our, on our site in August. And since then, in seven months, our team has produced twenty three community stories that have had over two hundred and fifty thousand impressions. So it, an amazing response from our community that they do want hyper local news about our community. And this is anything from a local Olympian to the fact that our judge performs wedding ceremonies to the fact that, you know, salmon have returned. It's, it's just things that people are interested in that really help build a sense of belonging and community pride. So this has been really successful and I'm just so proud of our team that among everything else that you see that we, we do as far as managing those tools. We've tried this to see if there is a need in the community and there definitely is and, and appetite for it. Next up is just one of the stories from uniquely Isakuwa. So we take those, they're on our webpage. We also post them to social media and then, you know, link people back to the main story on our site. Here's an example of one story. I included the comments to the right here. These are not comments on our posts. These are comments on posts that people have shared of our content. So it's this, it's this cascading effect, right? Of where people are showing community pride on their own platforms and saying, look at somebody in my community doing something cool. And then all the engagement that goes from that. So it's really fun to watch that kind of waterfall happen. And then another thing we did not realize as a, as a team, as we started dabbling in the idea of doing this, is that regional reporters are going to start to take our stories. So here's a story that we did for uniquely Isakuwa that then Cairo picked up. And so we're seeing that more and more. And then we're having discussions as a team of, how do we ask for them to like attribute that to the city of Isakuwa? But again, as we talked about, the resources of reporters are so restrained, even at a, you know, at a regional level, at state level. And so oftentimes those stories go, you know, uncovered as well. And so this is a way that those stories are, are going out in a more regional way through media partners. I just put this on here because it was a huge win for our team this week. A big part of community building is representation and we are, I think the only agency I know that recognizes our relationship cultural calendar.
Yeah, I verify that.
With every holiday and every day.
That's important to our community.
Yes, that's important to our community, yeah.
Well, that was trash.
Just a quick reminder, just trading away now from any kind of digital content. We also have our public engagement toolkit, which our team updated in twenty, end of twenty twenty three. And we've had this for a while. We use this as a guide as we talk with project managers about how to best engage with the community as a resource. And then make sure that we talk through all the different tools we can use to help facilitate that engagement. So that's something that's still a living and breathing tool for our team. We do a ton of in-person communications as well. And so we're definitely the ones that connect a lot of our project managers to community events. We're going to places that people are able to come to us. So more and more they're not going to be coming down, you know, on Tuesday evening and, and scheduling that as part of their, their day to come and tell us feedback. Instead, we need to go to where they are. And so we make that connection oftentimes on projects, looking for neighborhood events or community events or, or the city's hosting events. We also have seen some old school communications still very much work. So our word on the street signs, you'll see those out more in neighborhoods as we're doing road projects. Oftentimes, lots of people will use the QR code and not want to take paper with them. But sometimes paper has also disappeared depending on the neighborhood. So it's been very interesting to kind of watch that, that happen. But I took this picture of trick trucks right after the bomb cyclone. And at that point, people weren't taking a ton of paper, it was much more of a stamp. But yeah, it's been interesting to see. And then our team also produces all of the printed content that you see, like signage anywhere that we've got a, a city project going or people might want to know, what are we actually doing? So right now with pedestrian park, right? A lot of questions about what's happening in the city and there is signage everywhere around that project. And so we develop all the signage. As far as twenty twenty five work plan, really quickly, this is our last slide. We're excited to see what the community survey results are in May. We have questions around how people want to engage with us and so that's important. We're launching a Juan border podcast with police, very much telling the stories of what's going on.
That's great.
Yeah, that's so good.
Again, we have more of a long form platform that people are actually engaging with us on. And so hearing some of those stories around, you know, the successes and challenges our police have in response and serving our community, along with slipping in some really interesting fruit as far as police blotter content. So we're working on developing that with police, looking at how we capture people again where they are with more physical content. So as people are in our parks or working or, you know, watching their kid play basketball at the community center, we have more physical signage that catches their attention. So we're talking more about how to leverage that. The success of our resiliency hubs was shown during the bomb cyclone. We've been talking a lot about as we expand how many resiliency hubs we identify in each neighborhood. How do we make sure the neighbors feel ownership around those resiliency hubs? They know that's the place to go to. And so do we start experimenting with a few events where we have them at the resiliency hubs, not during an emergency? Where people can get to know each other as neighbors, but also be prepared for emergencies? It's time for us to update our social media policies. So there's some work going on there with our attorney. We are overhauling our parks webpages to make it easier for registration for programs. And then as Thomas mentioned, we're redesigning the newsletter. Another thing on here that I just want to mention too, is we talk about what's going on on council agenda. That is something right now that we do the week, you know, a few days before when the agenda drops, we do post it on X to say, here's what council is talking about. I think it's something we were just having a side conversation that we need to talk about as a team. Is that the right platform anymore to be doing that? Is there another way we can be sharing that same information? It's very much a recap. Is there a way that after the meeting happens, we can say on the same post, here's, here's what happened and link to the video or link to the, the action items that perks already produces? So I think that we can have a larger discussion around where to do that. We have not seen a ton of engagement around those posts. Content that we should be sharing with them. So we can have some favorites. And that's it.
So, so as part of the bond campaign, Bernie Rialdo and Sidney Bullings put out a video about this is how the police are funded. Too long, too much information, da 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 da. But I mean, I thought the concept was good. They were trying to communicate a very complicated concept. And Kelly reminded me of, of what was one of once a very favorite thing to watch on Netflix and that was such and such explained. I think the New York Times is putting that out or something. Those were great videos. And so going into this economic or fiscal crisis that we're looking at, instead of crisis, well, this unhappened situation that we're looking at. Can we figure out how to do a quick buzzy video that explains why things, why revenues are not coming in the way they? In other words, we get a hint of the information, we, we put out, you know, here's why this is happening. We don't have a solution yet, da 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 da. But we try to explain how government works to the community, but in an entertaining way.
Who was the one that you thought was too long?
I think it was almost a half an hour.
It's almost an hour.
It was long.
Yeah.
And, and state funding is very complicated, but they could have chopped it up and here, you know, here's how it's happening.
But how you guys made that conversation with the podcast, where it's back before, it wasn't designed to be short.
Right. And they didn't have any visuals. It was just confused talking and, and, you know, so, but I thought they were trying to make an attempt to explain to the public, this is how this does. So it just gives me that, here we have one thing that's coming up and we have other things that we will want to explain to the public. And if we could do those with plenty of graphics and it's not all just popping hints, you know, it would seem like that would start to address these issues. So how do we get to the foundational ways that government works and how that impacts you as a community member?
So I might say it sounds almost like you guys have fruit and vegetables, which are entertaining and, you know, information. Maybe this is the protein, but maybe we have to press it up with some sauce in order for it to be entertaining. But this idea of maybe not just reporting on, you know, new business or anything, but like, what's your city do? Why do we do it? You know, what are the impacts of what's going on with federal government at the local level? Well, and Mayor Polly and I have experimented and done a couple of videos, one on the proposed budget and then one right after the bomb cyclone.
How did they fare?
They were successful in terms, I think of it's a complicated topic. How best to be shared to the public? If we had produced that same kind of content in a mayor's newsletter or written on our website, I think it would have been a lot lower. It certainly wasn't top five like.
Not forty thousand.
Not forty thousand, but I think for what we needed to get across in success.
And they were longer than soon, but I'm hearing shorter. I don't know with the New York Times, how this works.
The box on the, on Netflix, it's like a show that you can watch with like a few X's or twenty minutes. On there's YouTube, they have a queen that are like, I would say ten, in the ten and a half. But those are like highly, highly.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not just putting somebody in front of a camera. But they're entertaining and they get to flip that little bit of information is just, um, and to you in just very nice, tough, fat way, right?
Isakuwa, explain.
So and that was tonight, I did a five minute video every week on the council meeting. I brought a staff member in and I said, this is the most interesting thing on the agenda. I had a staff member sit with me and I said, okay, we've got street standards and I've got the city engineer. So why are street standards important, city engineer? And she would say, street standards are important, blah, blah, blah. And I said, okay, the site is on the agenda. If you're interested, here's where you go for further information. Thank you, goodbye. I'm trying to see if I can find one on, online. I mean, and, and it was great because it gave the staff member who usually were shaking in their knees, thinking, oh my God, you want me to go on television? And I said, yeah, but you're going to talk about the staff report you've just spent the last three months of your life working on. So.
Wally was a city manager in that role.
Right, exactly. That's why, that's why we don't do it here. I'm the city administrator.
And if you, um, thoughts on whether or not you think, well, Polly just mentioned, but profiling staff is a good idea. I think the community might be interested in knowing if these people are, they're reports and doing the work.
Yep. Giving a face is useful. So let me take a step back. How do you evaluate your success in communications? Because part of this conversation was, we came in here knowing we're doing great work and you guys have obviously demonstrated that. We've got so much access and engagement and numbers and all of that. How do, how do we evaluate that considering the problems that we're talking about? And how do you evaluate whether or not you're successful or what types of metrics or goals?
I would say for us, as Autumn highlighted, we do weekly, we do monthly and we do annual reviews as a team, trying to figure out what's working, what's not. We're hearing the same things you are from the times where like, I didn't know that was coming up. All right, so where are these people? Why aren't they connected to us? Uh, because we can't be in every single driveway throwing a news paper at them and be like, hey, where's this?
Me, we could do, I'll talk about that later.
For the resources we have currently, how best do we get as many people as possible to know what's going on? So that's evaluating what's going well, what new tools exist, how much of a capacity would it take to bring them on? Those kind of things. I would say for the most part, what we hear, as we've seen from some of our data, that's, that's the best way for us to understand is data itself versus anecdotally trying to figure out how best can we do it too? Is that we're being successful, especially in comparison to how other people in our region are trying to do the exact same thing. That's not to say it's perfect. That's definitely room for improvement in certain areas. Anytime I talk to anyone, they're like, I didn't know that was coming up. I look at you, Steve Dye, and I'm like, we did it like twelve different ways, but thirteen way it got to you, I know it. So it's just constantly reevaluating. I think for the most part, we view what we do as successful, but we're always looking to leave ideas remaining and reach as many of our community members as possible. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add into that?
I think digital communications is easy to track our success and we're seeing growth every year and seeing more engagement and all of those things are, are going really well. I think that's one area we, so it's the anecdotal, it's the in-person, it's a lot of, we have people that aren't online that we're not reaching. It's those areas, right? But, but also, you know, it's, it's hard to know. It's a smaller portion, right, of our community. And so it's balancing resources versus how we're able to reach this kind of those last few, right? I think is one area.
Yeah, and as we're talking about these ideas of problems, you know, mistrust and misinformation, do, is the success metric there? Talking about, we've created a face for government and people know who we are. And so there's a sense of connectivity, but how do you measure that? When you're talking about people are busy and they've got the, you know, this whole attention issue. You know, maybe you can measure that on social media by subscribers, a number of minutes and things. But does it penetrate into, I have a connection and understanding versus numbers? So.
So on the community survey, is there any question that's in there that's like, I feel like I know what's going on in the city or something like that? And also are, how are we getting the community survey out there? Is there like a paper version of that? Because, okay, cool.
Do you want to be disturbed a little bit in terms of how we've done it in the past? Or is it?
Oh, how we're actually distributing the survey? Yeah, she asked, how does it get to people and is it asking about their source? Uh, so it's our, it's our one, well, it's a physically valid survey. And so it is mailed to a random sample. And then oftentimes we struggle with people opening mail or looking at printed materials. So there's a second mailer that goes out to those folks. And then on top of that, then there are phone calls to those people. And so there is multiple attempts to reach kind of that sample group. Once we get to that level or the goal of responses, then that's kind of when we close the survey. We also open up though, a, just anyone in the community can take the survey. And so we'll wait until that sample size is done for survey and then share a link through all of our platforms. It says, anybody else that wants to share their opinion. So when you see the data sets, you'll see our specifically valid one versus open to anyone in the community. And it's interesting to see those differences, right? Because, and, and this also is reflective of our challenge. It takes us sometimes three or It takes us sometimes three or four connection points to get someone to take an action. Um, and, and most times that's not through mail. Um, so that's, that has, we have seen that over the years, for sure.
But it's also balanced, sent out based on our community demographics and so the goal of, I mean, chain a certain number of people of statistical significance. But one of the questions on there is how informed do you feel about what the city's doing? And then another is how do you get your information? And so right now, the top place of information is the website.
Right.
And is it email next or social media? Whereas email is considered.
Two and three, I think, so one of those two is saying.
Word of mouth.
Word of mouth.
I have a friend. And number three is email and social media.
So I'm going to ask the group, uh, we're about two thirds of the way through this conversation about, um, communications. The other part is what do we do going forward? How important do we think this is? What would be our next? Or some potential solutions? Um, but we also have food here and so, and we're at twelve thirty, which is fifteen minutes behind now. Um, so question is, do we want to get food and then maybe try and continue the conversation through lunch? Do we want to speed run lunch and then get back to the conversation? Any preferences?
Can you take a break?
Okay. We're risking not being able to have as much time on the strategic plan priority setting. Or we can end this conversation and not get to a conclusion. Okay, nobody has any preferences, so I get to choose. Yeah.
I think, I think we've tried a lot of bashing or not, uh, a very robust dialogue and communications. I'm not sure that we will get more out of it.
Yeah.
So I would like to put a pin in this one, let you guys go around, think about maybe bring back some ideas and then let's move on to the next topic.
Okay, I have one other piece that I want to bring up. Um, but I think then potentially we could close it down. Um, and I will just say that I have gone to an SCA event with, um, a bunch of the neighboring council members and mayors. And one of the things I heard was that a lot of neighboring communities are going back to a printed newsletter. So, um, some manage, Redmond, Bellevue, Kenmore and Renton all have printed newsletters. They do them in different ways. Renton mails it out in their utility bills. Some manage does a very glossy newspaper like thing. Um, but in the ones that have been doing it for a while, um, they're showing in their surveys that it's their top one or two source of information. And that trust in and access to information has gone up. And so I want to put that out there, not as a, hey, we shouldn't do this, but just thinking about the different methods and ways of reaching people that might not be on social media. Or might not be subscribed to our email or don't check their emails regularly. I wonder whether that is something that we would evaluate and. Here, everything you're doing, I hear that there would be a staff limitation. There's just a field there of the information that I get from, um, connections newsletter. That's just a little bit different. So I just want to throw there just because it's something that others are doing and. Okay, food is calling. Let's get some food and we will try and be back here at, what was the time we were going to say? One o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay, we've got recording started. Thank you, Tisha.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Okay, so we've got what? Fifty minutes left in our retreat and, you know, we're just talking about the big problems, you know, prioritizing things across our strategic plan. So again, I want to start out with, this is not us. A asks for the administration. It is not that year. In fact, this may be used for cuts. It may be used to help us prioritize where we want to spend our time and resources and all of that. So what we've asked you to do is go through the newly wonderfully updated strategic plan. We've got the twenty-two, um, objectives under the six goal areas. Thank you. We, I, I wasn't forgetting infrastructure, I was just miscounting. So I want you to know that.
You only have five years of.
Exactly, yeah. How can I go beyond that? So on this wall over here, we've got each of the six goal areas with each of their objectives underneath that. You have five dots. That is not twenty-two. That is not even half of twenty-two. That is like twenty-five percent. And so the idea is you're going to have to make some stark choices here to indicate, um, preferences there. Then we wanted to take it a little bit different way because those are the objectives that have been listed. But, you know, you don't do objectives, you do actions or projects or policy analysis. And so the other way is we've got six, um, of the goal areas out here with blank areas underneath that. And we would like you to write down either one of the actions from the strategic plan or something that is like a. Activity that we could take or something like that. You have the responsibility within each of these six areas to write down up to two on each. And so this just gets a sense of where we are mentally as far as what we want to accomplish in the short term. Um, and then we're going to come back and talk about why we chose these things. And then one of the things that we can get into is yes, these are six goal areas, but some. We are able to advance in more and others we have some challenges, whether that be, you know, federal grants aren't coming through or. Trust issues or communication or, you know, aging infrastructure. So we want to talk about some of those strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats, SWOT analysis when we're talking about that. So I would invite you to get up. You can start on one or the other side, but we've got a few minutes to put together our dots and write down our lists. Um, under each of these items so that we can then come back and talk about it.
Thank you.
Any questions? No, you're just not jumping up and.
We're going.
Okay, fantastic.
Be doing one at a time and stopping and reflecting or are we doing all?
We're doing all of it so that we can do one part of it.
Or no, my reflection fit. I'm really sure.
It's repeating redirects.
So mine should have, uh, the internet one, I'll just sit up here and miss you.
My, my laptop is working.
Okay.
It says, try signing out if I did. Got all my, all my answers to these questions.
Hey, um, President, um, Boston check?
Yeah.
Um, one dot per day or can I?
Um, you can dump if you want.
I'll.
Yeah, it would be, yeah. You're unmuted. You think about you going over there, then I can talk about the calls and you can talk about that. Yeah. I feel like that, okay. So, okay, everybody, we are back at this point. So we have done our dot exercise. We have.
I love it.
Um, put all of our notes of projects and actions and everything on the sheets. Now the goal is how do we interpret and, you know, talk about this? We have twenty-four after, we have thirty minutes to synthesize the information. Um, so we're going to go pretty quickly. So over here on growth and development, I just want to note down, we've got, um, two votes for proactively incorporate diversity of content in neighborhoods. We've got free and comprehensive infrastructure plan, got four votes for permit streamlining. We've got something there for complete neighborhoods, corner stores, walkable access. Got plan for additional infrastructure required for infill and middle housing. Prioritize the project to advance the central sequel plan. Um, middle housing with kind of two votes here, which I think I would say is the theme is that. So maybe you could say, okay, four votes for permit streamlining, four votes for middle housing. There's a permit process and a plus one down here. Did those get incorporated in that? Or do I add them up? So that's six votes for permit process.
I think it's five because the plus one is the same color.
Yeah.
So I think one perfect.
I have purple. Yep, but the person who put the plus, um, on red, did you also put there or was? I think there's actually.
There are two reds or?
Two reds, yeah, there's two people in red and two people in green. So it's not like somebody overdone it or whatever. So I'm seeing definitely a focus on middle housing permit process. But some, you know, ideas on here around, um, central antiqua, complete neighborhoods. Um, infrastructure and infrastructure. So, yeah, a lot of agreement on, you know, some of those things coming through. Want to talk about what's over there as far as dots?
Growth and development?
Yeah.
So we have one dot on infrastructure is planned in anticipation of future growth, leveraging development and firm rate innovative sustainable and resilient signs. But we have three dots on growth, intentional and alignment mobility, ecosystem health, climate action, finance and continues to foster livability and community transformation.
Okay, and then you want to summarize, so it's two on there that don't have an end. So part of this is, huh, what might we do less of? So what are those? Don't read them all, but.
Okay, uh, these are unique neighborhoods. We've got to get a dot and city land use and plants are updated regularly. We've got to get a dot.
Okay, great. Um, any thoughts on what we've said then on growth and development? Anything coming through for people?
It seems very much like a message of stay in the course. Last year, we started with middle housing. We've got regular updates on permanent review process. So it really seems like council wants to make speaking plans. And there's things to be taken.
Yeah, and I would say middle housing is something we've been asking for, for a while. And so the fact that we are getting to talk about it is definitely stay in the course. Anything else you can synthesize from this? Okay, next one over here is mobility. Got two votes for ITS, the intelligent transportation system. So that's the, um, boxes that we put in at stoplights that help guide traffic, et cetera. Um, transit stop enhancements, seating coverings, we've got two there. Um, evaluate the trail system. Engage the community around light rail. So we've got three votes there. Uh, strategic small capital projects. Um, micro transit. So consider options for local connector buses. Would I just add on, yeah, what micro transit is? Yep, um, address bus and bike conflicts. And state support on sounds, oh, that's already voted on there. So two for ITS, two for transit. One trail, three for light rail. Small capital projects, micro transit and less and bike conflicts. And then tell us what we've got over there on mobility.
So we went over here, core dots for establishment vision for this post future sound. And my rails, which reflects.
Uh huh.
Over there. And then one dot, uh, near term connections and efficiencies in ability system are completed. Uh, no dots for prioritize the movement of people in boots. Through multiplying little transportation networks and no dots, but the city is the dot. For the safe systems approach to road side traffic.
Okay, any thoughts? So I think I'm seeing light rail definitely. And then a little bit transit and ITS.
Keep my work going.
Where do we feel like this leaves us?
Also kind of stay in the course, right? These are things we have thought about last year.
Yep, great. Okay, infrastructure plan for operations and maintenance cost to build infrastructure. Organization wide asset management plan, uh, city facility maintenance plan. Are those the same?
Well, asset the plan is what do you want to own and what do you not?
Uh huh.
Like maintenance is.
That's true, yep. But part of maintenance might be, what do you want to do because it costs too much?
That is a maintenance plan.
Yeah, uh huh, uh huh.
I, I don't know, the tickets value man.
Oh, gee, are you going to bring that up at every retreat?
Yes, I have been trying to kill that thing.
I know.
Dan McGill was, was a part of.
I know, yeah. Okay, so there's some relationship there, maybe put it in as evaluate our city facilities and three of those plans. That's the resilient water supply, so two there. Uh, energy resilient, solar, um, incorporate climate considerations into infrastructure planning by permit. Is that adding on to that or a different?
I think a different idea. Okay, I just put it on there. I don't think it's necessarily a priority for this.
Yep, no, it's straight to think through what we're thinking. So only saying one from the rain. So one of the things I might say here is infrastructure, a little less.
Yeah, well, I will say, so the city actually, um, auto sent me a facility efficient center. So it has like all the major needs for the next ten years and like what they all are. So we have this plan and then I think the activity is like, based on this, which of these? We want to make it on.
So I think the history there is we have started to get the data.
Yeah.
We have asked for that in a while, but we haven't made any decisions about, do we maintain things? Because right now we're not, yeah. Do, you know, we don't have the money to, and so I think that's what that comes to. Um, Barb, anything over there on infrastructure?
You put these guns, that one dot, uh. Plans and resources are up to date and proactively develop, manage and improve city hall infrastructure. To avoid long-term disruptions and prepare for climate change related weather events. It sort of reminds me that we've got, you know, it got a lot related to climate change and emergency events. This would almost been over there with the top one, uh, around emergency services. So, okay, great, also each one of those got one.
Okay, any thoughts on all of this? Yeah, I think we're certainly seeing maintenance and deciding what we do. General idea of, you know, uh, climate and all of that. Um, city leadership and services. Okay, we've got IPD community liaisons. Um, have a conversation on public safety operations needs, police fire, court, jail. And consider our central public safety levy. That's got four associated with it. We've got emergency management policy with three. Um, take the lead in creating a cohesive response to national and regional chaos. That's one, and then community courts. All right. So operations and levy and emergency management policies are definitely, um, highlights there. What do you see over on city leadership and services?
I think so, this got the most dots and anything up here. City is prepared for other certain risks inherent in our geographic location and increasingly complex world. Ensures some silliness of stressors before during a falling emergency. Six dots, right? Wow, this one is number two. Public safety resources meet our diverse community needs, got five dots. So these are the two top ones. Our vote was more, who's the first one again?
The top one?
First one was actually.
I'm on the top one.
Oh, first one is public safety, well, the top one up here?
No, 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 I'm sorry, the public safety one.
Yeah, public safety.
I was making it clear, I apologize.
Yeah, and while I wanted to speak to you.
Yeah.
So I, I want to be respectful of the time, I want to be respectful of the process, but, but this is really important.
Yeah.
So public safety, you're saying is really important. Is that correct?
Yes.
Because as we look at the course of the year, the administration's plan is to stay in the course with police. Continue to invest as we think appropriate, deal with the jail, keep an eye on the new chair of EPR. And so. That, that the budget issues with EPR are dealt with and we continue. And we continue to move forward with what the council has said on uh justice. So we've got good funding for prosecutor. Public defender dealing with the the building across the street. And so as we look at reductions, what I'm hearing from the council is public safety is not a place you want to look. Is that a fair statement?
That's.
And emergency manager.
So so then the second point is emergency manager. You know, we don't put a huge amount of resources there. Are you uncomfortable with the amount of resources you're seeing there? And should the administration reevaluate resource allocation for emergency manager?
And that's.
Well, I need six now for ten years.
Because that's really important, and that might mean taking resources from other things in order to. Double that with Jared's great. I mean, he's thoughtful, smart, knows what he needs to do, but he's one guy. Uh he's got a full-time, is it an intern? An intern, but is helpful. But the council's saying this is the second biggest thing after public safety inherently. I just want to look you off the eye and. You all the eye.
Yeah.
And and confirm that. Okay, is that, Council President, I see dots and.
Is there a piece we're missing that would be a great improvement and delta? Leap and bound? I I don't know.
Yes, so we have a surface fault that runs into this block. I've never seen any emergency preparedness that has anything to do with a ground rupture in the city, for instance. Right, which could go off this afternoon, right?
I mean, so, I mean, and 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 maybe council, we come back and have, you know, Jared came and talked generically. Maybe we need to have a larger discussion like this around emergency management soon or sooner.
I would say on both of those. I think the, you know, public safety resources meet our diverse community needs. Doesn't necessarily say a direction to go with that. It could be we want to invest in more homeless outreach and human services. It could be we want a jail is police staffing up. I I think these both indicate. Interest areas or some passionate discussions. I would say my thought on emergency management is resiliency hubs and, you know, resources and things like that, maybe more than staff.
Okay, and that's great.
I think, yeah.
Can I throw a caveat into two and I'm gonna pick up on something Kelly said earlier today, which is it's about outcomes. So I don't think these are necessarily, um, and there's a correlation between inputs and outcomes. But these are the outcomes that we want to focus on. And so it may not be that we need to more staff, but we want to make sure that we get those outcomes.
Right, and I guess, and I hear you a hundred percent, and I'm more worried about the emergency management piece of that than I am the public safety piece. Cool. So that's why I I I kind of skipping to that next step, thinking about resources on the emergency management side. I think resources were on the right track to get you to focus with the outcomes of the public safety side. So.
Yeah.
I don't want to take up too much time, but these were like one and two. You know, I wanted to be clear.
Well, and this is nothing, if it's if it's just numbers on the page, it's not useful. It triggers conversations and decisions. That's what it's meant to. So uh next one is social and economic vitality. So housing analysis, identify barriers to affordable housing production. Um. And it is. Advantage. Advantage tools and policies to recruit employees. So we've got two there. Um I H I P, so the ISQ housing investment.
Our piece of power.
Okay, um. And reduce loneliness and isolation. Okay, so this has two. Plus I put down loneliness epidemic and in-person events. There's a plus arts events. So I don't know how many I would count in there, but there's definitely a sense of.
I was the double red on that one. And one of them was loneliness and the other one was the one that's circling green, the the. Meetings or the purple circled in with a green square, whatever that one is.
Yep, so you're saying maybe there is a difference distinction to the idea of in-person events, but you also want. To look at loneliness and isolation, whereas I put it together.
Yeah, I I think that loneliness and isolation is kind of the the psychological things that we might be able to do. Whereas in-person events are the actual social things that we can do. This was my distinction.
Okay, and then I also see arts events. Um is that somebody's comment eleven plus one? So is that two?
That's me. And what I was pointing out is the two that we could use, uh the arts.
Yeah, okay, and then reduce barriers to affordable housing construction. I have one there, so. Maybe that's three that are reduce barriers to affordable housing production. Okay, so I'm seeing again a lot of agreement here of reduce barriers to affordable housing. Help with recruiting employees.
I don't think that's happening.
No, I'm seeing agreement across all our.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, some of these things are things that we're already doing, but the favoring not have recruited employers.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's really good feedback. Um and then lots in here about loneliness, isolation, in-person events. We have over there.
Okay, so we did have a third third places we have a tie. It was the sound transit by ground station. And then this one, there is an increase in new and retention of existing businesses. That choose to locate and expand in ISQ, especially those with wage levels that enable workers to also live in the community. And pretty much aligned with that is affordability, housing affordability better meets the needs of individuals. And families across the income spectrum to live and work in the community. And then now here we have two dots. It's supposed to look towards vibrant arts and public spaces. And enhance livability for residents and economic vitality for businesses. Connect community members and attract listeners regionally and nationally. And a lot of, a lot of stuff going on here. The one that didn't get any dots was the city facilitates connecting residents to human services organizations to help them thrive. I think probably because we're doing this. And we're we're doing it, yeah.
All the.
All right, okay, so housing.
Yeah.
What what are you not satisfied with what we're doing? Do you want to do more? Is it a policy question? Is it a dollars and cents question? Should we have a time to just talk about that? Because I think we talked about, you know, about a year ago, we spent a couple of different meetings, came up with the strategy that Jen has been working. They came up with I H I P, came up with the lots of money, you know, continue to put more money with R G. All of that was about, what, twelve eighteen months ago? So if you're happy with that, we can stay the course. If you want, we can revisit it. And then the other piece is land use. And what have we done in Title Eighteen that is keeping people from building the housing?
Nice.
And I, so those are like the two big housing.
I want with Bothell and Woodville. Why can't we have with Bothell and Woodville? Right, they have five over one or four over one. Newcastle has five over one, four over one. Why can't we get those?
And I think the reason is, is that the marketplace circuit today, there there's not a willingness to put it anywhere right now. And I think there's a perception that our land use regulations, what we've done with Title Eighteen are too pro environment and not pro creating housing. And so that's a huge honkin' thing. And you all have to decide when you want to rip the scab off.
This is an in-depth conversation we should have in more detail because I think it's just that developers consider us weak. And then if we if they ask for more, they will get more from us.
Okay.
So Newcastle, they do, Newcastle has built four over one, continue to build it post-COVID. Right, so it isn't, it isn't a matter of it not penciling out. It's penciling out essentially right now. But I think developers smell blood with us, and they don't think they have to do it because they think they don't have to do it. So it's a big, more, more conversation.
On housing production, why we're not getting it. The other thing I'll point out though is this one on here was particularly affordable housing production. So there's another conversation about, you know, what do we need to be doing in the affordable area? And that's to be, you know, that policy.
Well, that's why there's five over one and four over one, because those are.
Yep, 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 and it's entirely likely that we're, you know, what we're not seeing produced on.
So we adopted Title Eighteen what eighteen months ago. Um we've, you know, we've had a chance to see if it's going to encourage development. I haven't seen any. Uh, why don't we invite the developers to come in and tell us what's going on with Title Eighteen that we're not seeing a development come forward? Talk to us. Why don't we have that conversation with the developers?
They'll be enjoying that fantastically. They're inviting developers in to talk about what are the details, you know? What we've worked for for more uh things like that, so.
Well, we're hearing from developers, and we've got the red robin guy who's saying worry too much about creature, worry too much about setbacks. Worry too much about trees. And ISQ, you worry less about the environment, well, build, come build.
Well, we gave him everything he wanted and he hasn't built yet.
Because he's still saying, we still care. Our our code's too still too restrictive and.
I think there's a conversation there. We made changes. We're hearing from developers that there are problems. If they are problems that we stand by and we say, hey, we're not gonna let you build in a creek or a sea barrier, great. That gives us the certainty of, you know, what we need to be doing. But if it's something like there's no ability to do variances or things like that that we introduced in COVID, maybe that's something we need to do. And process.
So we'll work with council leadership and figure out a time to have a conversation.
Um last year, we have over here, never last, but it just happened to be environmental stewardship. So maintain enhanced tree canopy under story ecosystem health. We've got two there. Uh four for I C A P implementation. Uh invest in city-led projects to inspire community action. City conserves, acquires and enhances ecosystems. Uh increase volunteer opportunities and state and local grants for trees to peace. I want to share what we've got over there.
Okay, we have each one of these got one dot and then this one didn't get any dots at all. So instead of reading all of them. I'll just summarize. This one is is supposed to be a leader in climate action. Uh, and then it is supposed to adopt to practices for planning implementing value valuing programs and projects. Process departments. Uh the city conserves, acquires and enhances ecosystem. Ecosystems including urban forests and sediment habitat. Considering community benefit and potential effects of climate change. Again, another one on climate change, which really goes with our emergency concerns as well. So. This one didn't get any dots. Community members are active partners in stewardship or is a positive environment and in his positive response. Climate change. Again, we're doing this in a lot of ways. Fell a lot of like ISQ, Alex, Trill, and others are doing this, so maybe that's the reason we didn't get any dots.
So lots. Can you vote for I C A P implementation? Definitely is strong coming through there. And then, you know, we as a community support the environment and our stewardship and. By the many others around don't. The fact that these are on our list, um, it's important. So maybe a little bit more stay the course in that arena. Now, yeah.
I think I think the discussion we just had about housing versus environment was absolutely friggin fascinating because. Um just going to Tola's comments when you did your introduction that representing the the voice of the majority and not stomping on the the rights of the minority. I'm paraphrasing badly, but I think, you know, I think that's, quite honestly, that's the challenge of this job is. We want this, and we want this, and we want this, and we want this, and then they conflict. And we've got to resolve that conflict to that optimal um mix of guns butter, half-traditional model. So um, you know, I left Tola's model, and I think that we had that discussion, and it really popped out there to you, because we want this, and we want that, and we want this, and it's like, yeah. So what's the optimal mix and what's, you know, what's the optimal mix that represents the majority and doesn't stop on the minority?
I think housing is a really key one because not all of the people that would benefit from that are our constituents, yeah. And many of them are the twenty-six thousand that are driving in for jobs every day. Um so recognizing that and evaluating. Okay, I know all of this is rushed. We're at one fifty, so let's just take a few minutes to kind of reflect on this. And get a sense of how this relates to next steps and then we'll do a. A public comment and such before we're heading out. So.
I'm trying to go off white. Big circles are why emergency management came up there.
We certainly can. We don't have a lot of time, but if you've got something, anybody, as we're looking at this whole idea. Anything you want to highlight? Make note of, kind of call out. I think Chris has done a great job of saying there's a lot of conflicts and there always are. And when you're just looking at numbers and lists that that still comes up.
Yeah, I mean, I think overall there's like five very clear priorities from that list, which I make sure that we as councilors remain alive. Um and I think the others are not saying it's not important, but it's not where we're gonna put new effort this year, right? It's like, oh, with environmental stewardship, the one where it's like, oh, community members are, yeah, we all, we're already doing that. We don't need to put more effort into that. Whereas life of planning, we have not done that yet. We have to do that for to give a.
I agree in a sense, but I do think it's important to recognize in a tough budget cycle. In some cases, we may be doing something well. And if we have other priorities, not be able to continue doing it. And so it is a really important recognition. Can't do everything.
Now, you said at the beginning that if something didn't get support, it's on the cutting block?
Really? Not necessarily. It's just, it's all feedback for the administration. And I think this is an unusual mid-biennium budget year in the head. We would usually try and stay the course, but there are a lot of factors here. And so.
And so of the five things you mentioned, I'm comfortable that three of them, we can stay the course and will accomplish the things you want to accomplish. Housing is not one of them, and emergency management is not. So I'm taking from today that the administration needs to provide help and assistance to the council to sort through those other two. But the public safety, the light rail. Uh business stuff. I I feel pretty confident that we've got a clear. Direction. We've got, we've got reasonable resources. And again, this is all within an environment of contraction. So, you know, to say it's reasonable, I'm not saying it's perfect. I'm just saying it's gonna be okay. Emergency management stuff, you keep saying is important, you know, we fixed a lot of it, you know, it was a mess for a long time. Uh, you know, the saying for the mayor, we had, we had a great discussion, what was it, last week?
Yeah.
About this, that we've really changed how we're approaching it. It's a change for good, but I keep hearing from you, it's still not a dot. And so I think we need to come back to you and have a more discussion. We need to talk internally about it. Uh and then, of course, the housing, you've already, that's number eight, you've already, you already framed it. I mean, that's the discussion we all need to have.
So let me take a step back just to query council on this. I think one of the questions is if we stay the course on these five items, are we going the direction we want? Or are these indicating a need for change? So I I will just query, I think it's clear we want to have a conversation on um. Emergency management and discuss what the needs are there. Yeah.
It doesn't feel like emergency management has been fixed the way public safety has been.
I agree. I agree. Hundred percent. That's why I think you talk about it versus attracting the police chief in. I don't think.
So uh public safety resources meet our diverse community needs. Is this uh number on here indicating a need for focus or a continued, maybe we are cutting or a different direction?
So I guess in in my mind, you're doing a kind of a preservation exercise, and I would say. It's not that you're not doing that. I agree. There's this huge forward in emergency action. Uh I just don't want to see it cut.
And that's what that message has come through like.
Oh, okay.
But it's really important.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. But it's really important because there's so much money tied up in that.
Yeah.
So if you're saying it kind of like how it is, that means that's almost 50% of the general fund. We can go looking for reduction. And that's a huge.
Okay, so that.
Including fire, when you say it's 50%.
And justice.
Yeah.
And justice.
Okay, so those two as indication maybe are a little different. It sounds like there's an indication that emergency management needs more, at least needs a conversation. Public safety is stay the course, don't cut.
Well, I I just wanna tease out, I think there may be room for structural improvements in how fires start. Fire to me is not the same as police, as you say, public safety.
And with Chief Lane's announcement of his retirement, that puts that off that discussion off.
Right. If only we have a part of the leadership team either.
Well. But it's like, it's like, the board chair has told me that the the subgroup that's looking to recruit the fire chiefs, they're gonna have a very large, you know, listening component with whatever recruiter they bring on. And so that your chief will know that part of their to-do list is gonna be to talk about structural things, right? Operational, but also.
Um, I was gonna say, I mean, there could also be other aspects within there, you know, like the jail, whatever we end up doing, could end up resulting in. I'll say.
That we're on track to talk about.
Yeah.
So that's not, uh, uh, when I guess when I'm looking at new things coming out today, that's already been planned. So we already have days up the calendar.
Yeah.
Well, and I just wanna be clear, like, when I put the dots, I'm not, I went into this knowing we're strapped for cash, we're gonna have less. None of the dots that I placed were about new investments.
Yeah.
Like when it comes to emergency management, I think we're on the right track. We were starting to do really great relationships between Jared and community groups. We have new surclases coming online. We have new connections. So like he's slowly getting to where we wanna go. So maybe the mid buy is the right place to force a break if we need to, and maybe this is.
But but it may be worth coming to you with some options between now and summertime.
And then I, again, I just feel the same thing about housing too. I like, I, the I have, we've got a lot of stuff in the works right now.
Next one is, um, sound transit light rail station. Is this as, uh, number three, type for number three indicating we're on the right track or we need to make changes? But having this conversation is important. We shouldn't cut back on it.
Same course.
Uh, there's an increase, uh, in new and retention of existing businesses that choose to locate and wage levels enable workers living in community. Is this indicating we need to be doing more changes?
I I think kind of, I think definitely.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's an area that I.
And is it more on the connecting with businesses or more on the recruiting stuff with wages?
Yes, and both. But I think it's, you know, you gotta keep what you got. It's like, uh, hiring people, right? You gotta, you gotta keep the ones you got.
So.
But. So we're not gonna eliminate the new vacancy that just came up with that. No.
Development isn't a core part of what cities do, but we're indicating that this is an important area.
And and the administration is gonna continue to at least provide the resources. I mean, that would be an easy position to leave vacant for six months to keep, to have some dollars saved. But we won't, we're not.
So a cost code doesn't happen overnight. A, uh, our, uh, RAI doesn't happen overnight. Right? Swedish doesn't happen overnight. We need to build the next generation of those kinds of wings. Those, those connections have to be built right now so that we continue to get this better.
Well, and our business, our business partners are our future financial capabilities. I mean, we are blessed to have the sales tax, you know, tax revenue that we currently have that our friends up on the hill don't have. Cause if we, if you're, you know, if you're driven solely by, you know, this, I mean, property tax, you're in a world of hurt right now.
Yep.
So that, I mean, that's a, on the gas, not a.
Don't cut, yeah, maybe need to have more and have a conversation. Housing affordability better meets the needs of individuals. So there's so much going on in housing. There's middle housing, there's affordable housing, there's multifamily production. I think other than Zach, I'm hearing we need to have a conversation about that, maybe do.
So this, this one is true. Because honestly, I'd rather see no new houses if they're all gonna be at 150 to 200% than a mine, right? I'd rather see no, I'd rather see no new housing if they're all $2 million due boxes, right? But if 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 we're gonna see development, I'd like to see it like some of our neighbors have done successfully with with, uh, missing metal and, uh, for something. So either nothing or something that includes or for something. Either one of those outcomes is fine.
That's, that's why. Six of snow or we only ask them to do 10%.
Yeah, so affordability. Affordability, middle housing, it sounds like there's.
We need to kind of expand, so we'll, we'll pick the cow and have a cow.
Do we have any sense of what the affordability level is of the non, uh, restricted, on non, um, income restricted units? Like, do we have a sense of how much naturally importing, naturally occurring affordable housing exists in this block?
We, we, we've given the council some estimates that are far from scientific.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm geared, it's typically older, smaller stock. Yeah, and it used to be very exclusively Squaw Mountain and Old Town. Yep. Where it exists.
And largest.
And largest.
And largely so, yeah.
Okay, I'm rushing us to the end because it is now 2:01. Uh, we have an opportunity for a public comment. Wanna throw anything in there is Trish on line.
She left.
She left.
So I don't know how many hours later. And you talked about community engagement. And to expect, which often happens in your meetings, you have a lot of information and then the community gets a very short period of time. And then they say, but you can always write to us. And I can't tell you how off-putting that is to community members who come and spend their time to attend and try to understand. And this is one of the reasons why you don't get a lot of in-person, uh, community members is one. The things you talk about are not at all the way most community members see their lives and how they interface with the city. So it's like having to learn a foreign language to them. And then you expect them to speak using the language that you all are using in order to make an impact. If they can't use that language, then they can't feel like they can make an impact. So they never come back because of the language and the terminology in the agendas, in the presentations. And when you sit here, it's not normal human speak, right? So people feel stupid and people don't like to feel stupid. I personally have been chastised and offended after public speaking when I get up there now. I, I started to have skin of steel after all of these years and hearing this over and over and over again. But any citizen watching meetings where the speakers are not met with total sympathy because they are their community members, even if they disagree, they will never come. And people do watch and they actually, I don't think you got the statistics of how many people watch the meetings. I'm not sure who it is watching the games. And then there's the idea that they aren't interested. I am here to tell you, every single person, if you engage them correctly in this town, we'll talk your ear off about their city government and their hopes and dreams. Every single person, I mean, unless they don't speak any English and then they would say it through an interpreter if they got the opportunity. So, um, the idea that people are not interested is untrue. Now, the nugget for the last 25 years at every single council retreats, well, how do you get people then to feel comfortable and want to come and speak? And every year, just about for the last 25 years, I have said, okay, you go to their neighborhoods and you throw a party like Bellevue does. And you have your hot dogs and you have your barbecue and you talk to them about their neighborhood because that is their home. Asking people to talk about their lives using the context of an entire city that is super complicated is never gonna give you what you want, except for the five people who have a brain that really wants to, you know, to put the entire city in their head. So, um, this is, you never do that. In in the entire time of the 25 years I've suggested hot dogs, the only people that have done that is the Parks Department. And that is with great success and people come out and talk to them. Last time we did the comprehensive plan, not this time, they actually did little engagements with food, with people to come in neighborhoods to see what people thought about their neighbors. This time there was none of that, right? And then, and then I listened to this. And I, I, I can't tell you how many people I talk to all the time. I have to hide from people in version store. Right? Cause they wanna talk about their city, cause they think I know what I'm talking about. And I often don't. But I can hear what they say and they are saying, this town is fluff and amazing and I love the green and I love the smallishness of it. And I hate that it is, um, getting harder to pay my own taxes to live here. There's no place better for me to move and I love it here, but it's getting more and more and more expensive for me to be here. So the people who elected you are not saying, but, you know, I think for some reason my children should be able to live here. You know, I, I was not able to buy a house in Manhattan ever. You have to make your choices over life. Being able to not to get to places where you wanna be is part of the learning curve of becoming an adult. When you are paying the taxes and you're trying to pay your bills and exist in your place, the affordability of yourself is super important. So you're thinking, no, wow, they're thinking of something else. They're thinking of, wow, how much is a bond thing gonna cost me? And what is it gonna get? And I'm not doing that because I really don't see why we aren't safe in this town as a majority, right? So I, I, I am struck by that dichotomy of your conversations with what I hear people saying who live in this town when I talk to. Often. Now, the younger group, I even talk to the younger group. And they're going, well, you know, my taxes just went up. Of course, they're privileged. They've gotten to, they've gotten to move in. Now, context? Not long ago, we had 8,000 people in this town. And we now have 40,000 people. We have done a massive amount of, uh, of housing development. And if you look at the trend line for the urban growth management and what we were supposed to actually achieve over the initial comprehensive plan, we went like this and now we've leveled down a little bit. So we are actually just at the pace that we were always required to be at for our housing. So we have done all of our diligence for housing over time, far above and beyond our neighboring cities. And the places that were deficit is actually not the smaller pork housing. Our deficits are the, um, who was it? Who wanted it? Tola. Those larger structures where you could actually financially accommodate some more affordable housing because they might depend. So if we're looking at trying not to stretch our infrastructure costs, which what? Raise everybody's cost of living because we all have to pay for it. We might consider, am I on a timeline?
You're, you're a little. Yeah, I mean, okay, you're at about seven minutes, but.
No, you guys got four up.
So, yeah, I, I, that's what our providing officer just said.
Um, to consider, yes, the central is a plan, which is where we had originally intended to have this and discuss why it doesn't come now. Everything, there's probably the biggest cost for the central is what areas crappy soils underneath it and the amount of cost that it takes to actually build a decent sized building in the crappy soils. So anything else is is probably sluff. Uh, but you could consider it now. This last thing, perhaps we need to reduce our environmental considerations in order to accommodate housing. So what this last code did is it said, these are the rules. So you can see in your pro forma right out front what your cost per development are going to be. I hear the people who come in, they could do their pro forma, they know where their critical areas are. And then they say, oh, my gosh, there's critical areas here. It's like, okay, where is that? Is it because no one told them that they would have to, uh, this is, they'd have to do a variance? Well, you can do a variance. Now, the city may not support the variance because they they think they're going too far, which is the city's right to protect the town. So if you want to make this town grumpy as an entirety, you start saying, we don't care about your environment, which then means we don't care about climate action. Cause climate action is also the natural environment, right? And so now you're getting to the core roots of damaging our town and reducing its actual nature and the reason why people live here. So when you talk about the economic vitality of a town, wanna bring the town down? You reduce its integral core because you want to bring in something that is homogenous. Now, you're looking at a town and you're going, well, you know, it's all right. People look at this upon now and they say, wow, that is one of the most gorgeous places I have ever seen. So to to end the caution, I think you're totally disconnected with your community at this point in time with your conversations. Think you need to have some barbecues and eat lots of hot dogs. And I think you need to be friendly to everyone who comes and makes everybody feel comfortable. And you need to give them their feedback and ask, I think you guys need to get off the dais and you need to get community members to come in and be on the dais. And they get to choose the chopings and they get to choose jargon. And you guys get to remember what it's like not being on the city council, having all the information, trying to use language that is totally foreign to you. Because you all forget what it's like to be a humble human outside of the knowledge that you're fed. When the people out there have to dig it out, try to figure it out and come to you and look not like a bunch of fools. So last, last thing is you say we don't trust when you said we need to figure out why. The community distrust us is not listening because we need their money for a future bond. That creates a lack of trust. That is not why you wanna hear what your community has to say. That is just the baseline of creating problems. And that's what the city often does. So, uh, the conversation at the beginning is on film, which is beautiful because that was said a few times. And you know, nothing gets people going. Like a little bit of tidbit that you can put out on a social media. So anyway, there's, there's a little bit of a caution about approaching this, the, um, community from my own way more educated than your normal human on the city government, not by show's point of view. Thank you. Thanks for the extra time.
Okay, I would like to thank everybody for coming, for working on a Saturday of all of that. I'm sure council leadership will work when the administrators are kind of pull all of this together, we'll get the notes together and then figure out what all of the next steps are. These were certainly not the ends of conversations, but more like the beginnings and questions and all of that.
City administrator and mayor.
Yes. Okay, fantastic. Thanks, everybody.